We have, we're ready. Right.
Do you want to confer to the September 13th COVID order court board?
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yeah.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Here.
Stulber?
Present.
Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Did everybody think of a pardon?
Very, uh...
Yeah?
The board should have wanted to...
I do wish... Bring your motion to go on private.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
I hate to do this to everybody, but we're going in a private session.
And then you can come back.
And you can come back in. The regular reading is scheduled to start at 6:30. Point of order, Mayor, you're supposed to be as specific as possible in the opening of the meetings after the special litigation negotiations and all personnel. That's a blanket explanation? That's what it is. If I tell you what it is, you're... No, but you could say specifically litigation or specifically personnel. That's a specific... Okay. Thanks for putting that out there.
Councilmember Cosarrelli? Kennedy?
Here.
Longo?
Here.
Nattari?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Stulber?
Present.
Mayor?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad to see that everybody in this region stood up. No caperaes. We have a presentation for the winners of Mr. and Miss Belv... Pageage winners, Kyle Walsh and Luciana Gepol.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask Kyle Walsh and Luciana Gepol to sign it up, please. Come on up. So this is Kyle and this is Luciana. They are the third Mr. and Miss Belv. Those who are not familiar, the school administration, under the lead of Mr. Gary Colleteno, came up with a new idea that has really caught fire, not only in Belv, but in other places where they're trying to do the same thing, and instituted a Mr. and Miss Belv pageant. These are the third winners, it's their year. It's not just a handsome young man and a beautiful young woman. They are athletes, they are scholars. They have to do a lot of work. How many did you complete events? Thirty-five people. And the production that is put on when the winners are selected is rivals the Miss America Pageant on TV, and I'm not joking. Am I joking?
No, you're not joking.
I am not joking. It is, the judges for that, for that program, also, they're not Belv people, they're not politicians. They are industry people, they are people who really are involved corporately as well as in pageant work. So this is the, one of the most legitimate honors that you can get as a young person. And as you can see, they're smart, they're attractive. You get to hear them speak, you are amazed at, you know, the gift that they have and how they've been taught. So it is our pleasure, on behalf of the mayor and the town council, to offer these resolutions. Please read them. I don't reason except to say that now be it therefore resolved, that the mayor and Belv council do hereby congratulate the 2016 Mr. and Miss Belv, Mr. Kyle Walsh and Mr. Luciana Gepol. And further, the mayor and the council do hereby congratulate and wish success and happiness, councilman.
I would like to say to my sibling girl and Mr. Kyle Walsh, okay? I didn't know what to get you being a...
Competing in this, this pageant was a highlight in my high school career. And honestly, if I didn't take part in it, I think I would be in a whole different situation in my high school career. And honestly, it's helped me a lot for my college career and my path and everything that I want to embark on. And I just think it was a great experience for me.
It was also a great experience for me to, you know, we got a $1,000 scholarship, you know, I want to go to college also. Competing with everybody in the competition, it was like, literally, almost like Miss America. I loved every second of it. I made so many new friends and, like, competing against everyone, everyone was so happy for you to win. And I loved every single second. I couldn't be any more honored to be Miss Belv and to represent our school and our town and our district.
I'd just like to congratulate you and Kyle on, I guess, your, your school spirit. You know, at least you get involved and that's the way it should be for every student in high school to get involved. Whether it's sports or, no matter what, I want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Make sure you're not into that plant.
See, bro, so just keep water with you.
You know, you're the rock this day. I'm gonna start a meeting up. You clean.
Thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Special action?
And this 2016 budget.
Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the amendment to the budget.
Court of legal resolution?
Whereas both fiscal budgets for the year 2016 was approved on 14 June 2016, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now. Therefore, be resolved by the township council and county investors that the following amendments to the approved budget for 2016 be made. Total general revenues, sixty-two million, two hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents, to sixty-two million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
Mayor, let me find my place here. I offer the four dollar resolution, move its adoption.
Court of law?
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Mayor, I request the court be instructed to read section two, the adopting resolution for the budget.
The court will read the resolution.
Be resolved by the governing body of the township of Belv County Investments that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation with purposes set stated in the sum therein, set forth as appropriations and organization of the amount of forty-eight million, seven hundred twenty thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and five cents.
I offer the four dollar resolution, move its adoption.
Second. Court of law?
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Report to the manager? So the court will move on one shot?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Report to the manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item I have in this evening's agenda is the Silver Lake Firehouse renovation. We do in fact have a schedule for roof management, who was the successful bidder. Mobilization was to begin between September 12th and 16th. My understanding is that will happen in the next couple of days. The roof replacement will take place, will begin, rather, by September 23rd. From September, sometime between the middle of September and October 7th, the brick and the ladel restoration will occur. The front door frame alterations will occur during that same time period, and demobilization and completion should occur by October 10th. I'm also happy to report that we have been awarded a grant for Main Street flood control by FEMA in the amount of $142,528. The federal share of that is 128,250, and the non-federal share is $14,278. And this is to install additional check valves and catch basins on Main Street. Yes. Next item is the cleaning and relining of the water mains in Silver Lake, which I know has been an inconvenience for some of you because just the nature of that work. But I have been informed that the city of Newark did in fact put out door knockers to everyone explaining what was going on and if there were issues, what numbers to call. If you didn't receive these, or for whatever reason they weren't at your residence, please call my office and we'll do whatever we can to make this as easy as possible. There was also raised at one of our previous meetings, the whole issue of shopping carts being around town. I contacted the folks over at ShopRide, as well as the police department have also contacted them. The carts are in fact being picked up. Some, they tell me, are from other stores. There's a system that they're going to be putting in place around the perimeter of the store that actually locks the carriages from leaving the parking lot. It's quite expensive to do, and it does take some time to install, but it will be done, so the problem is in fact eliminated. We also had a request to look at a traffic signal, a left turn signal on Girardamon and Union. Mr. Chief Manikini has in fact spoken to the town engineer, and if it is the pleasure of the council, Mr. Haritz will in fact conduct the study that's necessary and provide necessary resolutions and paperwork, so we can forward on that. We also have a community outreach event coming up on October 29th at St. Peter's Church. Where our police department will continue to reach out to the community. There'll be refreshments there, and it should be a fun evening. Last but not least, we in fact had a meeting with the county officials concerning our municipal alliance program, which is a drug and alcohol abuse program that is a collaboration between the township and the board of that. It was a very successful meeting. We have not always accomplished all of our goals in that area, but we are very hopeful that with some regrouping and some reorganization, we will in fact do that, and we will reach the full benefit of that program. And last but not least, we did in fact have a meeting with the owners of Branchburg Gardens, and the discussion centered around not so much rehabilitation, but redevelopment of that entire site. And as we get more information and we move forward, I'll keep you updated. That's all I have.
Did you mention just a pardon tomorrow?
No, I did not. I figured one of the officials would in fact make that...
Just a pardon tomorrow.
Little more due now.
Yeah, just an update on the townwide garage sale, which is September 24th. I think as of Friday, when I spoke to the manager's office, we had about 50 people that are already registered. It's being advertised as far as the addresses to see where you want to go. It's being advertised on the website. I think the Belv Times is also going to advertise this. The range date is September 25th. Well, my question is, do we have a cutoff date on this, especially for the, for the Belv Times as far as your...
For the Times, obviously, the clock is ticking. It's the 24th, okay?
I'm sorry, I think the Times is here? Oh, the Times is here.
Oh, they are here? Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you want, if you want your, your address and the site of where you're holding your garage sale to be broadcast throughout the township, to the paper, to our alert system, then get that into us ASAP. We don't have a hard and fast time. We will in fact check with the Times and see what the last date is that we can get those addresses in.
And you can register through the finance department?
Absolutely. You would do it the same way you would do any other garage sale. The only difference is, this one is much larger, and hopefully, this one will be much more successful.
And I'm glad to see that we're addressing that issue that I talked about at the last meeting regarding the shopping carts. Thank you. That's the one.
I just have two questions. Sunday was 9/11, and I would like to congratulate all of those who participated in putting it together and making it come off. It was amazingly dignified, it was well attended. It was just tremendous. And so all of those who, who put that together, great job. But I was mostly struck with Councilman Kennedy's participation as the speaker. And I'm used to having him getting up and being kind of funny and, you know, and with his whips and things like that. But it was a very moving and serious heartfelt speech that he gave, and I appreciated it. And I had certainly thoughts and prayers for what he talked about. And it was, it was just a terrific way for our township to honor those who are, who are no longer with us. So thank you for that. And, Mar, I was just wondering, I see if we have these new signs on Garella Parkway, the street signs?
I'm sorry?
New street signs on Garella Parkway? Are you going to put the county braces sign back up on Forest?
Yes.
Just, not so much for Mar, but a little announcement. At our next meeting, me and the manager talk with Sun Life Financial. They're a company who tries to help out with people in foreclosure and pre-foreclosure. They will be at our next council meeting on the 27th. And I think they're coming at 6 o'clock, just for about 10, 15 minutes. Yeah, give us a quick overview, just if there's any interest, if anyone's in foreclosure or pre-foreclosure, or if you know anything. Well, the Franklin Avenue Fire Headquarters, the bathrooms, have they ever been resolved?
Yes, actually, Councilwoman Burke was visiting there and spoke with the chief and myself, and we all got together, and Tom Haritz got involved. We contacted the contractor, all right, who actually subbed out that portion of the work, which was not to our satisfaction, and took them a long time, they never finished.
But we kind of lit a fire under them, and we threatened to go to the bombing company,
cancel our contract to get the work accomplished, because it didn't manage to work last October. And the work wasn't up to what our standards are and what our expectations were. They have since relieved that, that subcontractor of his responsibility. Brought in another subcontractor who has completed the work. Mr. Haritz has to just go through a punch list now. And through the councilwoman's efforts and the efforts of Mr. Haritz, with the job is near completion, not totally complete.
I visited, Mar, and let me tell you what a difference.
Major.
It's like I had 80 percent before, it was like I had 20. I was devastated to see what was going on there, but thank God.
And that's just the beginning. The headquarters, as well as some of our other folks, need some sprucing up, all right? Because we're always conscious of how much money we're spending, but there comes a time and a place where you need to spend a little money to save a little money. So that's another initiative that will be undertaken in the future.
I want just to echo Councilman Longo's statements in regards to the 9/11 ceremonies. It was very well attended. Tom, you did a good job in organizing that. Kevin, you did give a hell of a speech. And I, I have told him that a couple of times already, but thanks, everyone who was there. Thank you. Communications.
A letter of resignation received from Joseph Corriello from the township of Belv County Board.
I make a motion for the exception. Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli? Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Request received from Belv Little League for permission to use Belv Morris baseball field, two days a week for practice, and one day a week for games.
Is this the only field on Montgomery Street?
No. No, this is the Belv Life Field, baseball field.
No, no, but the, the Belv Little League, that's the ones on Montgomery.
But because they're moving to a higher league and they need a bigger diamond, is what I understand, correct?
Yes.
I notice people here.
Yes.
So I think we should let our rec department, send this to our recreation department to determine the dimensions of the field that they need, and how, how many times you're going to use it. Because I, I don't know if they're going to play on the grass and upset that field, so I think we should send this request to the recreation department itself and let them handle it. That's only my suggestion.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor? Request received from Franklin Sheila Boxes for visa escort for the second annual breast cancer ball on Saturday at 2:15 at 11 a.m., beginning at Michael's House Common House to the Little League field.
I make a motion to introduce it.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Orders for introduction?
Orders number one for introduction, and orders for men to provide general ordinances of the township of Belv, Chapter 16, the S8 sanitary code.
I make a motion to introduce it.
I second it.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor? Orders number two for introduction, and orders for men to qualify women's as a township of Belv, Department of Health and Human Services.
Make a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Orders for introduction?
Orders number one for public hearing, bond orders providing various collateral filings invited to the township of Belv County Executive Bureau, appropriating $4,409,000 there for authorized conditions of $4,226,900. Bonds are noted to the township to finance public trust there.
Make a motion, openness of public hearing?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Stulber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. Could you break down exactly what this $4,909 is going to be going to? That we are potentially going to be bonding to?
One more, 20 years.
Yes. Mayor? Yes, we start with the, with the police department, appropriation of $420,000 for the acquisition of police vehicles, including all related costs and expenditures incidental, which are lights, sirens, things of that nature.
Do you have a number of vehicles?
We have, we do have a number. The vehicles run anywhere from $27,000 to $40,000 each, all right? I can't give you a hard and fast number right now, but I can get you that if you...
No, that's, that's, that's pretty good to start, yeah.
That's a good ballpark number.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? In the fire department, we have a utility truck that we need to purchase for $9,000. We have $200,000 in here for the refurbishment and reconstruction of the Silver Lake Firehouse. This would be the second phase. For the code department, we have modernization of records and technology, and everything incidental to that in the amount of $50,000. Department of Public Works, we have architectural and engineering services for various projects that we're going to undertake. The sewer department...
And what is that going to be?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. On the sewer department, we have a refurbishment and a replacement of the sewer pressure truck and/or portions of it in the amount of $30,000. We have $767,000 for road improvements, which also includes $246,885 of state of New Jersey DOT money, which is presently frozen. So we need to wait and see where we're going with that. Then we also have another...
So then the resurfacing will wait until that, we get that information?
I'm sorry?
That includes resurfacing of streets and such that you were saying that have to wait until the state?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Well, we can start on some of the road work that we're funding.
Okay.
All right? And typically, the way this works is, we bond for the money, we make the expenditure, and then we're reimbursed. All right? So that, that will continue. We also have another $1,933,000 for various roads and improvements, through, and with $376,000 of that being CBPG money, all right? And last but not least, I'm sorry, not last but not least, the building department, acquisition and installation of generators and various public buildings and all the costs to install them in the amount of $800,000. Wow, that's also a grant. So this will in fact be reimbursed. In the recreation department, interior improvements and acquisition of equipment for the friendly house in the amount of $150,000. And that all totals $4,409,000.
As it goes, the refurbishment of the Silver Lake Firehouse, says another $200,000.
Correct.
We already have like $247,000 bond orders for that. And the work that went up is the roof and the nation work, but it probably pulled somewhere around $8,000.
I don't have that number in front of me, but I believe it's right around there, yes.
Right. That's a relatively small building. The fire truck just about fits in the first floor. But that's it, the first floor, the fire truck. It's a mall. Upstairs is just empty paper sleeping and facilities. Now, with $247,000 and another $200,000, you know, almost half a million dollars on a building that could be built randomly for less than that. Why are we, while we still have over $170,000 left in the original bond orders, why are we appropriating another $200,000?
The reason we're appropriating the additional $200,000, because as I mentioned in previous meetings, all right, while we're bidding the elements separately, all right, we don't want a break in progress, all right? So I'd rather have more money in the bond orders. We'll only go out for the amount that we need, and whatever amount we don't need, we will cancel or not go out for at all.
Okay.
So that's the reason.
Mr. Tucci, and more importantly, council members, I'm against this for many years, for many reasons, because you see what's happening. You float these bonds, and like, we just got the crazy answers about the fountain over there in the, the sitting park, the fountain, all right? That we hired Tefelli, and then we're, oh, we had money in a previous bond issue. I'd rather the public be notified and notice when each project is done, how much it costs. Because when you put all this money in, and we hear, Mr. Tucci, I've heard it a long time. When you were here, the last time I, I go back 48 years. Oh, if there's any money left over, cancel it. Somehow in Belv, it gets spent. It gets spent, it doesn't get canceled. So I'm against this until you see, you still got, like I said, $170,000 to do this minor interior work that's got to be done. Let's see, that should be more than the whole second floor.
I wouldn't characterize the interior work as minor interior work.
Well, then tell me what you're doing in the second floor.
This is a total gut job. As soon as the architect is done with the specifications for the interior and all the renovations and all the mechanicals and everything that has to go with it, I'll be happy to share that information and that number with you.
Well, then why don't we wait until that time to see if we need any more, need any more money? Let's see, let the public see exactly what's being proposed for that second floor before we just throw another quarter million dollars.
It's the entire building. It's the entire building, and it, and it's just an approach, all right? The reason that we included this in here was not to have any delays, all right? So that, that's the rationale. I mean, you can agree, you can disagree, we all have opinions, and we all have valid reasons.
And again, we go from cash history, it doesn't work, and all we do is...
Well, my cash history, we can't, we're in the middle of January, so that's the only thing I'm going to speak to.
None of these projects, like we just witnessed with the Franklin Avenue Firehouse, never commit on budget or properly done. The Live Erby, the Silver Lake, nothing ever happens on time.
It may not have started out that way at headquarters, but when we're done, and we're, again, we're 80% done, it will be done, and it will be done properly. And I, I understand your frustration. I can only speak to what I can control at this point.
I wouldn't have a successful business for 44 years if I operated like that. So I'm telling you...
We all have different approaches.
And we're tired of this stuff. And we're tired of this stuff. Under the road department improvements, we've got two, $767,000 and 1.9 million, which is 2.7 million. Are the, any of this 2.7 million going to clean and reline the water mains before we pave these streets?
No, when we get to the next ordinance, there's $200,000 there for the water department to do any necessary work before we repay, so we don't have to have our streets cut up and opened up every, freshen pavement.
When we're done right now, I worked in Maplewood, they're all blocked off, someday they're cleaning and relining their water mains. North is planning to reline the Silver Lake. Why don't we just do this? I mean, 25 years I've been asking you. What do you, council members, go and wake up?
I think he's telling you it's in the next bond ordinance.
Huh?
It's in the next bond ordinance, the money to, to reline.
No, it's not to reline. It's not to reline, if you read it carefully. It just said various repairs to it. I'm talking about a specific bond ordinance like we used to do to clean and reline from X Street to Y Street. And so this is where we have our infrastructure. You keep paving these streets, over 100-year-old infrastructure. You've got public works out every single day, there's another one broke just this week on Cedar Hill Amity and Homes. And another one I just passed this afternoon down the valley here, it's bowling through the street again.
Mr. Frank, Mr. Antoni, you're...
Fix your infrastructure before you put that black asphalt on.
And that's exactly what we're going to be doing. Mr. Harris, because we've heard this story before, and it's a valid story, and it's a valid point that you make. Mr. Harris is developing a program of cleaning and relining where he's going to be outlining for me all of the streets and all the water mains that need that service, and then we'll be back to propose to the council what it is we need to do to clean and reline the water mains. You're absolutely right. I don't disagree with you one bit of what you just said.
I've heard that from you for nine months and ain't done.
No, you have not. No, you have not.
I've heard from...
You may have heard what you wanted to hear, but you did not hear that from me.
From these councils alone. What has taken Mr. Harris so long? Because I know what it takes to clean and reline. We would get the engineer to tell him to do it, in three or four weeks he would have the plans and we're relining. This is not high-tech, you're not designing a 100-story building.
Okay, he's laying out a whole program there, so that's just...
Not right. And then the recreation department, interior improvements to the friendly house, another $150,000 to a project, again, a small building, 13 years, all right? It started under the DeGore and Palante administrations, they screwed it up, and there was nothing wrong with the friendly house, it was a minor renovation going on, and now all we do is keep paying more money on it. We keep paying more money. We give a builder a design build contract, he designed something and builds it without sanctioning it. So then they had to go for extras with sanctioning it. Then nobody figured out that you had to pave the parking lot. Then nobody figured out they had to put sidewalks on. What is going on? Now another $150,000 for what? Our children, if somebody had a five-year-old child at the time, that child graduated high school, he never had the opportunity to use that friendly house recreation site. Now what are we doing with another $150,000 specifically?
We need to buy the equipment like it says for basketball, volleyball, tables, things like that.
Tables, chairs, mats.
Mats for the wrestling.
Mats for different programs, aerobics programs, tumbling programs, wrestling programs. Everything that we don't have there now, we have a building, we have an empty building. So we need to equip the building so that the children of Bellville and our young adults, and in some cases, some of our adults, can utilize the building the way it was intended.
We recall last year it was all done, all we had to do was pave the parking lot.
I don't know what to...
And do this here. You know, and, and this would have been done. And all we do is more money. I, I just don't understand who's in charge, Mayor? You, or council people overseeing these things? Councilman Truett, Chair Councilman Burke, this is your order. How'd you allow this to go on for 13 years?
That's a lot going on.
Not much. They built 100-story World Trade Center in two and a half years. This is, this is...
Instead of condemning, talk about the bond ordinance.
This, this is the final one.
Okay, I know, but you don't have to question them.
Well, I'm saying, all we do is go on, all we do is...
This is what it is.
I'm going to basketball courts. You ripped a perfectly good basketball court at the rec house, then you spent $125,000 for bathrooms that are never open, today you have a port apartment there. What kind of management is this? What kind of management? It's terrible, having our tax dollars chucked out of our pocket for waste and mismanagement. And, and it's got to end, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Bill, it's Frank Antoni. And on the bond ordinance, when you're talking about paving the streets, my boys live in Bullfield. They got notices through the mail a couple of years ago, not one street would be paved until they lined and relined and waterlined or whatever they did with it, and they didn't. Everybody just working on it, and that's what they're doing, and that's what we should do in this town. Because when you pave a street, then the water line breaks, you've got to kick it up again. So, you know, kind of think about what you're doing before you...
Thank you.
Do the top work, and then you have to redo it over and over and over again.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel.
Yes.
Orders to adopt. Orders number two for public hearing, bond orders providing for line maintenance, repairs and related incidental materials for the water utility invited to Town of Bellville, County of Essex and Jersey appropriating $200,000 there for authorized issuance of $200,000 bonds or notes to the township to finance for progress thereof.
Make a motion open for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel.
Yes.
Mr. Frank Antoni. Mr. Mayor, is this the, the other ordinance you're talking about, about the water line? Because this sense is providing for line maintenance, repairs, and related incidental materials. Is this $200,000 to clean and reline? Because you don't do things piece-me-up. You do a whole section, you go look at Valley Road, Maplewood's that, they got blocks and blocks, wall with the pipes in the street, so they block off the whole system, so they do it right, and they do every line to the house and all that. So is this quarter million dollars going to be for clean and reline? Because you said that's our next ordinance, it's what we're doing.
Is this, is this going to take some other consideration?
It could, it could. Depending on how far we get with valve replacement and other improvements, all right, whatever's left, we're going to foot towards water main cleaning and relining.
You say, now with this $200,000, put it in specific, just tell the engineer, you want this street done, these four or five sections of the street for this $200,000, we get it done. It's new. When you do it, you replace the valves, you replace the laterals, and everything is done new. We don't have to worry about these incidentals, line maintenance, repairs, and incidental materials. Nobody up here is planning properly and spending our tax dollars wisely. So again, I'm asking, and, and, and what is this something new? You end a public hearing with one vote, and with one vote, you're doing two things, you're ending the public hearing and voting yes or no. We're entitled to know how to vote. So you should have a vote, end the public hearing, and then there should be a roll call and see how each individual member votes on these individual ordinances. When did this stuff start? One vote ends a meeting?
We do, Frank.
All right? We're entitled to know how each of you vote on these issues.
They voted.
You voted to end the public hearing.
End the public hearing and move it for its final adoption.
Well, you can't do both.
Yes, you can.
Well, then you know in advance, you're all yes folks?
I don't know. I don't know what they're voting.
When you're going to end the public hearing, we assume you're all going to end the public hearing, so on the city...
Ben, you want to talk about this ordinance now, please?
This is the order.
No, no, this is not the ordinance, you're talking about how we vote.
Yeah.
You've talked about the ordinance, and when you give public participation, you want to tell, complain about that, you're fine.
Well, I hope this is not enough. I hope you stop the public hearing and then they can separate vote, and so we can see who votes yes or no on this order.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Make a motion, close the public hearing and move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel.
Yes.
Bonds. Orders number three for public hearing and orders to amend revised general ordinances in Town of Bellville, Chapter 8, there's the Indian Cap Parking Code.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel.
Yes. Indian Cap Parking.
I'm not against handicap parking. I, you can leave it, you need it. But there's two of them, I might go off, and are those being renewed? From, you know...
Yeah, 32 and 63.
Yes.
Okay. And what I want to see, a lot of them, people have pulled me up on how to get handicap parking in front of their house because of the parking situation with the illegal apartments, so please check into it to make sure it's viable, that it's really...
The police department does investigate every one of these, sir.
Yeah.
And they submit a report whether...
Because a lot of times the doctor will just sign off on it before you call it to have departments. Thank you.
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel. Orders to adopt. Orders number four for public hearing and orders to amend, ordinance number three, four, force grade, creating personal conditions and adopting expectation compensation plans.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel.
Exactly what is this amending? How, what's changing?
Well, more than, or, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're doing is bringing in clerks at a lower salary.
Are there additional clerks that we have now, or is...
There don't have to be, no, it's any future...
They're just titles.
Okay, I wanted to talk, just a few...
They're just titles at this point.
Okay, so it's not...
So as, as people, as people leave and if we decide we're going to fill these positions because of attrition, all right, then we, our expectation is that we're going to bring them in at the lowest salaries, that's why these are introduced.
Thank you.
By any chance, is one of these positions called Recreation Leader?
Yeah, Recreation Leader, see, I see it, yeah.
And is by any chance, is the salary 50 to 52,000 or in that range?
Are you reading the ordinance? Is it, is that what it says? 50, 42 to 52?
Right. Is by any chance, is, is this position being created for a former councilman?
I may hit.
No, no, we have, we have the position there as a part-time position at an hourly rate, all right? This makes it a full-time position.
For what occasion?
For what reason?
Yeah.
For the reason that we had several part-timers, all right, who were doing different functions, all right, that can be accomplished cheaper with a one permanent person.
Were they receiving benefits, the part-timers?
So, I'm a loaded question, not to my knowledge, all right? Not to my knowledge.
Will this full-time position be received with them?
Absolutely, all full-time positions, you know that well.
So, you know, we've had some bad experience at appointing and giving jobs to former mayor and councilmen. So, but then I'll ask you, does anybody think this job is going to a former council person? Okay, we'll see, we'll see.
And what if it is?
Beautiful Bellville. Beautiful Bellville, takes care of its own, not its own citizens.
Well, I hope Bellville takes care of its own. I do hope Bellville takes care of its own.
It's own inner circle, Mr. Mayor. It's own inner circle, not the residents.
No, Bellville should take care of its own. You made a right statement.
So let's see who gets this job. Let's see if it's a former councilman and mayor.
Now, I just, a month ago, I think that was the last meeting, I missed, someone brought it up, and I questioned it also about a job freeze. And there was some explanation about replacing who, replacing who. Now, I looked on the agenda outside, it said account clerk, key board, recreational leader, zoning and manager. The zoning and managers of, now, my question here is, the account clerk. Who is that account clerk replacing? Full-time or is that full-time, part-time?
It's not replacing anyone. It's not replacing anyone.
It's a new position.
It's just a title.
Different title.
Okay, but, but is that a new person going in there, or?
No.
Or a present employee?
No. It's either.
Key board, same thing?
Same thing.
And the rec leader you just mentioned. But my, all right, so basically, the new person here is the rec leader? Is that what I understood right now, based on the?
Actually, I believe that they're, they're all new, all right? There was a correction on the zoning board, all right?
And the managers, obviously.
And obviously, the manager, the manager position.
My question is, where, where were all these positions advertised? Were they advertised for the general public?
They're, they're not, they don't need to be advertised because we're not, we're not filling these positions.
No, no, no. No, no. Last meeting, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, of course. I remember you saying something, you gave me names, like the police department, you said somebody else who replaced them.
Right.
All right. But the other, but then there were other positions, which I don't have the papers written. Now, those positions, they were, you said they were replacing someone.
Right.
But, okay. But those people came from the outside, or they're still within the township? If I remember correctly, you said that because based on the hiring freeze, you didn't add any additional.
Right. No, no new, what I said was, there were no new positions, okay? The only people, the people that were hired replaced folks that left.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, so those people that replaced the people that left, where were those positions advertised? Were they advertised in a paper? Or how did we find these people? That's my question.
Many, many times, we don't, we don't advertise them because we get applications every day from people coming in. We have a file full of applications. So we go through the applications. If there's someone that, that matches the skill set that we're looking for, all right, we'll, we'll look at that. If not, then we'll go outside and advertise. We're not going to advertise just for the sake of advertising.
No, but at least we let the, just that perception out there that it's not selected for certain individuals, I think that's the key upon advertising to the general public and the qualifications.
Thank you.
I would like to know why you put these positions in there if you're not filling them.
Because if we have to fill positions at a future date, it's a lower salary that they're going to come in as. Am I correct, more of a?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
So in other words, these positions will get filled eventually?
Maybe. I mean, if they are filled, they're going to be coming in at a lower salary.
Well, you should put it, you should put them in there. And you should think of the people that have to foot the bill. Because a lot of people can't afford to pay their taxes to pay their salaries. So eliminate some of these positions. This is ridiculous. It's the Bellville Employment Agency.
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell. Orders approved. Orders number five for public hearing and ordinance amending the, amending the development fee regulations of the Affordable Housing Ordinance of the Township of Bellville.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
I'd like to know a bit, but it, maybe the wording is correct, it's the Affordable Housing Ordinance. But how are we?
That sounds right.
So how are we amending this ordinance?
I didn't hear you if you told your joke.
How, how are we amending this ordinance? You're amending the Development Fee Regulation. How?
If you, if you, if you recall, the governing body has already adopted development fee regulations pursuant to the courts, the Supreme Court's instructions in color. The governing body did that before the reorganization meeting. I think it was our last meeting in June, if I'm not mistaken. When I did that, I was in close contact with the, the special master who handles a great number of the municipalities, including Bellville. And she suggested some minor text changes to the ordinance, which I promised her I would do. And now we have the ordinance and we're amending it in compliance with her exact request.
What would have changed?
Well, there's a number of them. Beginning on page one, there's a formatting, there's, for example, indentation on the left-hand side. She eliminated what I originally had as subsection E. She made the last sentence on D. She suggested the last sentence. This ordinance with a capital O shall be interpreted within the framework of Coles' last adopted rules on development fees codified in Jack five colon ninety-seven dash eight, as same may be interpreted and applied by the court. Moving on, she, she had formatting issues with regard to paragraph three, which I changed the formatting, which just means the way it's set up in the document. The residential development fees, she suggested, for example, the language, she re-formatted within all of the township zoning districts, residential developers except for developers that have type of development specifically exempted shall pay a fee of one and a half percent of the equalized assessed value. She changed language in J to reflect when an increase in residential density pursuant to forty colon fifty-five D, there's seventy small d five, known as a density variance, has been approved, instead of the word permitted, developer, instead of may, shall be required to pay a development fee of six percent of the equalized assessed value for each unit that may be realized, except that this provision shall not be applicable to a development that will include a set aside of affordable housing units. Moving on to paragraph, I guess it's four, small Roman seven, right above number five, says that the languages she wanted included as additions to existing homes and improvements such as decks and patios and the like shall be exempt from the payment of a development fee. And then on imposed fees, she capitalized my small r in non-residential development fees, changed how I had two and a half to make it the, actually, the actual number is two point five percent of the equalized assessed value. Did the same thing in sub-paragraph five, A, small Roman two. Number three was left alone. Going next to sub-paragraph, small Roman four, where it says, the developer of a non-residential development exempted from the non-residential development fee pursuant to public law two thousand eight, chapter forty-six, shall be subject to the development fee at such time as the basis for the exemption no longer applies. And then in the final line in that paragraph, she inserted the word, or requested actually that I insert the word for instead of the word of. The remaining changes with regard to development fees were nothing more than formatting. In paragraph seven, where it says the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the small t and small f in trust fund were changed to capital T and small f. In sub-paragraph A of that section, second line maintained by the chief financial officer of the township. She wanted that clarification. Then with respect to the rest of that paragraph, it was formatting. The paragraphs were, instead of being one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, she put sub-paragraph B, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. She suggested that. Again, in paragraph eight, use of funds, the small f was capitalized to a, from a small f to a capital. Again, continuing in eight, in B, that paragraph was changed to funds shall not be expended to reimburse the township available for past affordable housing activities. C was changed to include the word thirty instead of the number thirty. And then percent was changed to the number and symbol for thirty percent. Going down to a sub-paragraph D, excuse me, D, again, I had put no more than twenty percent using T W E N T Y. She requested that I change that to twenty percent, the number and the symbol. Under the monitoring provision number nine, that's section nine, township available shall complete and return to New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Local Government Services, all monitoring forms required in connection with the, and we took out the words included in monitoring requirements related to the collection of the development fees. In paragraph ten, ongoing collection, it now reads, the ability for the township available to impose, collect, and expend the fees shall expire with the end of the repose period covered by the judgment of compliance, which has not yet finally been issued, or with a designated administrative entity of the state of New Jersey, which has petitioned for a judgment of compliance. That, that language was added and has received approval, instead of the word, the court approval, of its development fee ordinance by the entity that will be revising that, reviewing the housing element and their share plan. So that's, that's essentially what I was requested to do. When I did the original ordinance, the changes were minor. The special master has been given a copy of this before it's being introduced tonight. And I believe that Bellville is going to be found to be once again in compliance with the Supreme Court directive.
There was one issue in the original one where it says, a one family that was converted to a two-family would have to pay a development fee. Has that been eliminated?
If there's an intensification of the use, everything else is the same. If there's an intensification of the use, it's going to apply. If it stays within, for example, if you put on a patio or something like that, or a deck, there's not going to be a fee assessed.
See, that's an exception, but the, the original one had a specific line where it says, if you convert one family to a two-family, you're subject to a development fee.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what the, that's what Coles requires. I'll read it to you. It's contained in both of them. The, the development fees shall be imposed and collected when an existing structure undergoes a change to a more intense use, which requires the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And there, and I think you've seen this specifically, for example, when a single-family home is converted to a two-family home, or a single-family home is converted to an apartment building, the development fee shall be calculated on the increase in the equalized assessed value of the improved structure.
I don't agree with the one family, the work of the two-family. So.
Through the chair, who was it that reviewed the application and made these suggestions?
The special master.
Special master for the state of New Jersey, county of Essex?
No, actually, the state, the counties have different masters. In Essex County, there is a particular master assigned to, I'm not going to say all Essex County, but I, it's pretty close to all of Essex County.
And that's an appointment by the state for which every, those particular?
Yeah, that's the way the judges set it up.
Okay. And that person had a name?
Which escapes me at the moment, but I, her first name is Elizabeth. I'll, I'll give it to you when I go back to my office.
Okay.
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number six for public hearing and ordinance to amend by general ordinance of the Township of Bellville, chapter eight dash two C, residential parking permit area.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number seven for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number three, two, two, zero, entitled, the ordinance establishing a residential parking area and timed parking area on Chestnut Street between Franklin Avenue and Camp Carrot.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
D'Umbelber.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Mr. Segura, hand it over.
Are we open for public hearing now?
Yes.
Just on the ordinance.
For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Elizabeth Protes. I live in Franklin, five-eleven Franklin Avenue. I'm president of the homeowners association of the condos there at five-eleven. For quite a few years, we have suffered with no parking, permit parking, timed parking on Chestnut Street. We implore you to rescind that so that parking during the day, we can have visitors, vendors, people coming in. I have, I brought to you today thirteen members of our residency here who have all been affected by not being able to park. I myself couldn't have my priest come for communion when I was sick. The physical therapist couldn't come because there's no place to park where he could bring his equipment in. The residents here have all had problems with this. I would like to see that parking removed to the north side of Chestnut Street. We will be willing to remove any cars there any day that the town has an event, that they need parking on the street. We're not greedy, we don't, we, we don't want to own the street or ask them to get together and buy and pay taxes. We'd just like to be able to park. Many of us have two cars. We have students here, nurses, people who work at night. Young ladies don't want to walk the streets at night, three or four blocks down Franklin Avenue, in order to get home. It's not fair, it's selfish, and I'd appreciate it if you would rescind that. And I'd like to see the survey that they took to do that. I, I don't understand, a one little short block with two houses that demands parking on a whole street.
I, I think what we're trying to do tonight, or this ordinance is trying to do is, just remove the word "side." Loud, loud and park is there.
Yes. On, on, on the north side, we'd like the parking to be removed.
That's what's happening.
That's what we're doing tonight.
Mr. Michael Burns, he's an owner of it. All these people here are, are.
One at a time.
Registered voters.
Okay, you, I'm sorry, you finished?
I am, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Michael Burns. I, I own unit C seven at five-eleven Franklin Avenue. Roughly thirteen years ago, I'm not from this area, I'm from South Jersey, I'm near the Philadelphia area, but I've owned this property when my son went to medical school up here. We searched high and low for a safe place for him to live. We looked everywhere. We found Bellville.
Thank you.
We like this community. I kept the apartment, and I kept the unit because we liked it. I currently have another student living there. I'd like to present you, if I may approach, with a signed petition and a letter of purpose regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the issue has been going on for such a long time, we suffered it when my son lived here, it's been ongoing. You can read the, the letter of purpose, and I know I only got five minutes, and I'd be more than happy to read it to you, but when you listen to this, Protes, you know, the issue here is that the property, when it was, I'm sure you have a planning commission in my town in Haddon Heights in South Jersey where I live, I was a member of the zoning board. We have a zoning board, we have a planning board. And I'm sure when, when that, when the building was constructed, it was reviewed, they allotted one parking spot per unit. This is now the year two thousand sixteen. We have more congested area, more cars, more people in the area. Many of the residents that live there, there are two people that work and they have two cars. The problem is, is that just recently, to give you an anecdote myself, I had, I had to change out a stove, okay? And I had to have my tenant, who's sitting here today, move her car onto the side street on Chestnut Street. Unfortunately, she parked for more than thirty minutes because it took the guy longer to get the stove up and get it put up. She got a fifty-dollar ticket. That's ridiculous, okay? I cannot have, she'd like to have her sister come and stay with her over the weekend. She can't, because there's no parking. And, you know, I'm sure her father, as well as myself, I would not like to see my daughter, my wife, my sister, my niece, walking the streets, parking four blocks away to have to go there and visit. It's an egregious situation, it has to be remedied. It's not safe. You know, the, the thing is, is that when you look at the area, I've looked up and down the streets on Franklin Avenue, there's no parking, no stopping. There's no parking right now, there exists a condition on Chestnut, and it says Chestnut Street, I believe it's owned by the town, if I'm correct. And I see on both sides of the street, no parking. Zero parking on half of the street on both sides, permanent parking on one side of the street. Today, when I pulled up there, there were two cars parked. I don't think they had permits to park there, which is ridiculous. You shouldn't get a permit to park there. And on the other side of the street, we have no parking, I have the photographs of the signs, no parking from, from nine AM in the morning till six PM. But this is when, if I need an electrician to get in to do some work, or a plumber or something, I can't get it done. The folks that live here can't even get a visitor to come. They can't have anybody stay for longer than thirty minutes. Now, I don't know how this is, how it's blossomed and how this exploded into this situation, but it's egregious, it's horrendous. It has to be remedied. I think that, you know, what the people are asking for is, is an intelligent solution to this. It is a situation that, and this isn't just five-eleven, you know, think about some of the other homes that are in the Indiania area, they have overflow parking too, and you've got restricted parking. We have it in my town, in Haddon Heights as well. I live right across the street from Haddon Heights High School. When I moved there, I knew I was going to have excessive noise and excessive parking problems. I knew it when I moved there thirty years ago. My options are stay, put up with it, or move. That, that's the way it is. This is the year two thousand sixteen, it's not nineteen fifty. We have a lot more cars, we contend with it, and more people. So I won't bore you with the rest of our statement, but I, please understand, there are thirty taxpayers and voters in that bill, there are nineteen units, and that all need some redress here. You're, you're affecting my real estate value, I've already been told by my realtor here in town, the Century Twenty-One, that if I go to sell this, I'm going to get, I'm going to get hurt, because I will not get probably what I even paid for it, because I saw an article in the paper recently about this, that addresses this situation and blows it up. It, it, my property value has been affected, as well as all the other nineteen properties. So I don't want to be put in a position where I need to come and make a tax appeal. I'd like to see you guys do something about this, to give some relief to the situation in an intelligent fashion. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Moran, I also live at five-eleven Franklin with everybody else. Born and raised in Bellville, moved down to my parents' house six years ago. I chose to stay in Bellville. I taught in Bellville for the past six years as well. My fiance has followed the law as it's been, we're unable to park on that street. Parking's tight on Franklin Avenue, we'll find it. On July sixth, at around seven-thirty in the morning, she was in the first legal spot on Franklin Avenue going south, and, and her car was rear-ended by another woman who was coming around and was distracted while she was driving. Thankfully, somebody saw, called the police. When we came out, there was a note to come here and get the report. We had it towed, and it was eighty-two hundred dollars worth of damage, which very easily could have been avoided had she been allowed to park on Chestnut, which for the five years and eleven months that I've lived there, I've been unable to park on that street. Nine to six, as we've mentioned, is an outrageous time. If I need a cable guy to come, most aren't coming after six. If I need a plumber, anything like that, most aren't coming after six. So, what I'm asking is that, I've lived here my entire life, I love living here, I continue to live here, and I'd like the laws to show that I'm being rewarded for my service as well. Thank you.
Someone speak?
I've lived here all my life, and I love where I live. I consider it the best location in Belleville. I take a little issue with the fact that my councilwoman, Ms. Robell, did not call me and say, "We're going to have a meeting, come down and hear what your neighbors have to say." He didn't say anything. Then, I didn't see ordinance came up. Did Marie know about it? No, she had to get a flip call. Oh, go look, go look on the internet. So, what I'm saying to you is, I deserve an opportunity to express how I feel and how beautiful area does not mean the township clear. But whether or not, I resent the fact that someone criticized me for having a driveway that I park four cars. That driveway is my backyard. Some Belleville residents should help out.
Could you just speak on the ordinance, please?
Excuse me?
Could you just speak in regards to the ordinance?
The ordinance, this is in regard to the ordinance. I never had the opportunity to express myself.
You have the opportunity right now.
Yes, but after the fact, after the fact. You know, I just had this discussion. I love where I live, I've lived here all my life. When I moved from one stop part of town to the Camp Carrot part of town, which is where I live now, I loved it, and I still love it. But what I'm resentful about was that I wasn't informed before the introduction.
Okay. You were here at the introduction, if I remember.
I was here after the fact.
You were here at the introduction?
I didn't know.
Mrs. Volanary?
And I didn't have anything to do with the parking setup.
Mrs. Volanary?
That wasn't arranged by me. I happen to live here. What I feel and what I think at this part of time is irrelevant. All I want to say is that I feel that after living in Belleville my whole life and loving where I live, and I've expressed it many times, I really, I should have been informed, okay?
Thank you.
I really appreciate this. I just wanted to say that I wasn't entitled to be heard, and I wasn't wrong.
Beg your motion, close public hearing, move to final adoption.
Second.
Before we go, Chief, let me, this north side of Chestnut Street.
Yes, sir.
Do I still have to get permitted, is that going to be open now?
This ordinance is going to be open.
The north side?
Is open parking for the north side?
North side.
South side. It still has permit parking.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Quick call roll.
I just have one quick question.
I'm sorry.
We're done. You're finished, please.
Hold on. Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbow?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Ordinance Number 8 for public hearing and ordinance to amend Section 12-1 of the clarify ordinance system town of Belleville entitled State Uniform Construction Code Enforcement Agency.
Beg your motion, open it for public hearing?
Second.
Quick call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbow?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Thank you for listening to about seven, eight pages of fee increases, all right?
That's what it looks like, yes, sir.
That's fee increases. On one page here, you've got the hot water heater, fifty dollars, and further down, hot water boiler, ninety dollars. What difference?
I guess one is for the heat, and one is just for the hot water.
I wish one is the hot water. The hot water boiler.
I guess the hot water tank, right?
Well, it doesn't say that. It says hot water heater and hot water boiler.
Har, you know about this, or one, see which one's what? Hot water boiler heats the house, right? Hot water heater heats the water. All right.
And you know that, you're a...
Yes, I do. All right, well then, the reason I'm asking is right now, right now, we have an exorbitant fee of eighty-five dollars to replace a hot water heater that we call it. But if this is correct, it says hot water heater's fifty dollars. So, are you lowering it thirty-five dollars?
It looks that way.
Well, then what is the boiler?
I would say the boiler's the one that heats the house.
Yeah.
The hot water boiler.
Am I wrong, it's the one that heats the house, right?
You're correct, right.
I don't know, I would consider it. But then, but then I'll be...
I mean, I'm in construction, so this is how I take it.
What you're claiming, application, so are we lowering the fee for a hot water heater?
It looks that way, don't it?
Well, if that's correct, I thank you.
Okay.
And I would ask you to lower some of the other fees for excessive, so I hope you're accurate, and I hope you're made of jackass. So, in other words, when we have...
If it's a mistake, I guess we'll have to, uh, re, abandon it, rectify it.
Okay. But I just want to state it publicly, the next time I go for a hot water heater, it's going to be fifty dollars. Don't go to mark.
Beg your motion, close public hearing, move to final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbow?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Orders approved. Ordinance Number 9 for public hearing. The ordinance of the township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jer, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan for the non-condensation area in need of redevelopment identified as Block 8902, Lots 1, 10, and 11 on the tax map of the township of Belleville, and known as Ninety-One Terry Street and 371-381 Portland Street.
Beg your motion, move for public hearing?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally? Yes.
Right, no.
Are we talking?
We're all for the public. We're going to take the vote first.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbow?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Miss, no, miss.
Thank you, sir.
The area you're talking about is directly behind my house.
Can I just have your name and address?
Oh, Rondishman, 417 Portland Street. On the corner of Terry, the area you're talking about is directly behind my house and runs the whole length of the block towards Giralemun. It's a big building that has businesses in it. In my house, we have lived there thirty-odd years, and I've seen big changes in the neighborhood. This neighborhood is not, not in need of redevelopment by any stretch of imagination. Thirty years ago, it was. It was in decline, the houses were in disrepair, and it needed a facelift, it needed help. But as time went by, what happened was, we got good businesses moving in. And first Bartlestone came in, Bartlestone Glass Company, right there down on the dead end of Terry Street, and what used to be a trashy, empty lot, which was dangerous, and kids and people used to meet there and do who-knows-what there, and cars without their lights on, and down from the railroad tracks, there was traffic before those condos were built, and it was, it was a dangerous and dark area. Bartlestone moved in, and they cleaned it up, they made it secure, it's lit, well-lit, and made it into a thriving, very busy place, and, you know, a thriving business. And it's now migrant glass company took that over. At the other end, down by Little Street, Gold's Gym came in there, and that building became cleaned up, well-lit, now it's Signature Fitness. It's an incredibly busy, vital place. And down at the other end of the street, on Giralemun, is National Shirt Company that's been there for decades. Everybody knows National Shirt Company. And to me, this is like, this area is our neighborhood, we coexist with businesses there very well. To me, it's like a mall, and those businesses are like the anchor stores. And the big anchor stores in the mall, when they're thriving and they're in good condition, they take care of all the littler stores in the mall, and the littler stores benefit from them. And this is how our neighborhood has worked. And over the years, as those businesses moved in and cleaned up that neighborhood, and made it a safer place, and made it a more pleasant place, people, the houses changed hands, people started fixing up their houses, people started moving in with younger families, and today, it's even better than it was by far than thirty years ago when I lived there. And I would say that it's a huge mistake to think that this needs to be redeveloped. All you really need to do is get the ginseng corporation that owns that building to maintain it. And if they would fix it up, if they would clean up what they need to clean up, what comes up in people's backyards, you know, the peeling paint and all the things that are so ugly with that building, they just, it just needs to be maintained. But they have renters in there, there's several businesses in that building, it's not vacant, it's not abandoned, and it's working. And we can work with it, and it does not need to be redeveloped.
Diane Rockwell, 403 Portland Street. Also with Mrs. Schmidt, I reside on that property, I've been there twenty-nine years. I've seen that area from having one family, two families with children, to now many families that have children. Can I ask, what, how did you determine it to be in need of redevelopment? What was the criteria that you came in and what study was done to say this is an area that needs to be redeveloped?
I believe our planning board thought it wasn't used to the full extent of its capacity.
Okay, because there are businesses in that warehouse. What needs to be done with that property, if it is in need of redevelopment, it's in need of repair and maintenance so that it is secure for the tenants that are in the warehouses. I believe there's two warehouses on that property. Not area of redevelopment, because if it's an area in need of redevelopment, what are you looking to develop there? Residential property?
Yes.
No, that's impossible. This township, this township is falling into bankruptcy with the irresponsible development of residential properties. As it is, this township has over three hundred homes on the market at a medium market value of less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. On top of that, you have just as many homes in some form of foreclosure. We do not have a fire department, a police department, or a school system to maintain any more residential property in this area. These families that here are talking about parking. I live on Portland Street. The average home today has at least two cars in their families. But when you have children in that family, and they start growing up, and they start becoming of age of driving, you're talking about three, four cars in the family. Where is everyone going to park if you decide to turn around and put residential property where those warehouses are located? I sincerely, and I really hope, the council does not allow this to go through. Because the density population is, you're breaking the laws for that. It's only, this town is only three miles wide. You're talking about one city block between, on Portland Street, between Terry Street and Giralemun. How many units are you looking to propose to put there? A hundred and fifteen apartments. A hundred and fifteen apartments. So, what is the criteria in regards to maintaining a police department per population? Our taxes, our taxes have gone up in this town over a hundred percent since the year 2000. In this town, you're giving away property that is prime real estate.
We're not condemning this problem, is it?
No, I know you're not condemning it. You're going to condemn it in regards to putting residential property there because you're going to drop the housing values within that immediate area, you're going to continue to raise the taxes, you're going to have to improve on and engross, enlarge the fire department, the police department to accommodate these hundred and fifteen units.
I disagree with you.
Well, you can disagree with me all that you want, but in this market today, the housing market is ready to burst. What the market is...
No, I mean, I disagree in regards to the number of police and fire.
In regards to, what the market is looking for today is retail and industrial warehousing. And in order to turn around and keep the, this township working and moving forward, have the gentleman that owns the property maintain the property and keep it as it is as a warehouse or as it's being used for the companies that are already having, that are utilizing it. The salaries are going up in this town, the homeowners in this town, the people are paying taxes, we can't afford it anymore. We don't have, we don't have a civil service pension, we don't have a teacher's pension. Not a lot of us here. We can't afford your salaries, we can't afford the taxes that are going up. This is getting out of control and out of hand here.
Do you want to speak on the ordinance, please?
And you need to sit, I strongly go against the redevelopment and calling this an area of redevelopment.
Thank you.
This area, Block 8902, Lots 1, 10, 11, are not, as previous speaker said, an area needing redevelopment. Now, a planning board consultant, CME, their CME report obviously did not investigate this property properly. Block 8201, Lot 1, contains an industrial building that is fully occupied. There's a cabinet maker and distributor there, he works there every day. This is not a vacant, abandoned building, all right? It is the building that should be cited for property maintenance violation. I was down there Sunday with some people, he's got a nice business there, but look at the outside. There's weeds growing and cluttering, they, now, a gentleman I know, ninety years old, about six months ago, got a ticket for his grass being more than a foot high. This guy's got weeds and trees going on the other. It's property maintenance, not an area of redevelopment, right? Right in front of this side, on Portland Street, go look there. There's one or two family homes beautifully maintained. These people take care of their properties and all that. Block 8902, Lot 10, is the lot that you entered from Portland Street, but it goes from Giralemun Street back halfway to that. And by the way, that property, that you're talking a hundred feet of result, is in back of these lovely residential homes. It's only seventy-six feet wide, the property. And this developer, you know, I don't know who gave the figure, a hundred and fifteen, the developer that wants to build there stood right here about a year, year and a half ago, and said he wants a hundred and fifty-six units to build there. He then went on to say that, and this was before Mr. Tucci was the manager, right here in the public, he said, and he needs a pilot because the bank will not loan him the money to get the pilot. On February 23rd of this year, when Mr. Tucci took over, check your minutes, Mr. Tucci said residential developers want pilots to make their projects viable. That's exactly what the developer said. A pilot is giving this guy a break, and the rest of us, tax, we have to pay the taxes for all the other services in town. Now, Block 8902, Lot 10, like I said, it's a fully used lot with many commercial users. As of 5:30 this past Sunday, just two days ago, I was there with several other people, there was twenty-five dump trucks that rented to park them, and that's a great business because your chairman of your planning board has the same kind of business, and he parks all his dump trucks up at Say Gavin. So, that's a good, we welcome that kind of, that's what we know, that's the kind of things that pays taxes, and we have to provide no services, no schooling, nothing. The... Uh, the, there's a landscaper that rents space to park there. This is the explosive contractor, and I have pictures of all these vehicles that are there. There's two general contractors that rent space there. There's a paving contractor, and there's a couple of garages that are used for storage for contractors. This is what's in demand. As Mr. Tucci, a Nutley resident knows, right on River Road about a year or two ago, he built all those garages over there, rented immediately. Contractors pick them up, this is what's needed here. Industrial, commercial ones, you'll, you'll rent them. Um, also, Block eleven is the little corner of the house. A few years ago, either the plan of board, I think it was the plan of board subdivided that. It's a small lot, and there's the one family house. It's either a house or an office there, but it's fully occupied. All that property is fully used. I'm waiting out the tax rolls. The three properties are paying eighty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. So we're getting revenue from, from the place, which is not demanding all kinds of services and all that. We don't have kids in school, we don't have the police problems. The trucks have gone all day working, they just come back, park the night, and it's a nice business. The adjacent Cortlandt Street is home to thirty-five businesses. If you go down from the gym, like the lady mentioned, through the home street, there's thirty-five businesses in there. That's what the valley is, and this is the good kind of red bull that we need. Uh, those eight or nine homes in that block have coexisted with these businesses for many decades. Somebody told them to pass down through several generations. Do not destroy this area. Also, none of the criteria in your ordinance should refer to forty-eight, Home twelve-eight-five, an area in need of redevelopment. None of these, uh, quite seven criteria apply. Number one is generality of buildings. Um, Lot ten, you know, it's an open, Lot ten is an open parking, storage area, right? It's, it's got gravel on there, so that's not, you know, in bad shape. You're talking about a parking lot, alright? Um, B, under the redevelopment statute, discontinuation of use of buildings. There's no discontinuation, they're still being used for, for the intended purpose. Uh, C, land owned by municipality, the county or, or other agency. Well, it's not, it's all in private hands. Under D, areas with buildings of dilapidation. Well, it's not dilapidation, but it is property maintenance. That's the only thing, if you wanna stretch your imagination, but it's, if we could not afford to clean up this property, which we have to do in our property maintenance ownership, uh, we could do it. And, you know, I, I, we built some gutters on one of my houses a couple of years back, and then I got busy and I didn't take the pump jacks down. Two pump jacks would take sixteen feet up. I get a violation for property maintenance. How can this guy get away with that? Uh, also, under E, condition of title, diverse ownership, et cetera, it does not apply, there's one owner, the Ginseng Corporation. Under F, areas of five-plus acres or more that are destroyed by fires, this was inserted by our legislature because it's a sacred fire. That doesn't apply in there. And G, if it's in an enterprise zone, we don't have an enterprise zone. So none of the criteria for, under the state statute, for areas in need of redevelopment, apply in, in this case. I, I, I just don't know what we're doing. But in addition to that, the one lot is point ninety-four acres, the other is one point two. That's approximately two acres. Our zoning ordinance is twelve units per acre. So you thought, even if you did build, in which we don't agree, it would be twenty-four units of housing. This guy came here, it's on the record, a hundred and fifty-six units. He wants seven times the density. Now, I've gotta praise the zoning board, because over the past year or so, they finally come to their senses, and they're rejecting quite a few applications on the basis of the density, the extreme density that is killing this town and creating these, like you just had a parking work. I was smoking a little bit. Well, this parking work, you might not praise you. The density and insufficient parking, you've had proof tonight. You've had proof tonight of what happens when you overbuild residential. It's not the kind of red bulls that is good for community. And especially the valley. We need to continue this to there. Now, your zoning ordinance, the purpose of the zoning ordinance, I paid for one of the zoning ordinance. The purpose of the zoning ordinance, one, to lessen congestion of the streets. Well, you're gonna have all these, you're gonna have overflow parking, you're gonna congest the streets. One and nothing, to prevent overcrowding of lands and buildings. If you're gonna jam something in seven times the density, you're violating your home zoning ordinance. Well, number, another one, to avoid undue concentration of population. Once again, you're gonna jam a hundred and fifty-six units in in less than two acres. That's in violation of your home zoning ordinance. And the other one, to conserve the value of property and encourage the most appropriate use of the land throughout the municipality. So the state redevelopment law doesn't apply to make this an area of redevelopment. And your own zone zoning ordinance doesn't, uh, is not allowed in this kind of development. So please, let, let's be reasonable here. The simple thing, the building structure is down, you have demands of violations. And again, I started, we don't give violations the first time. We give them a notice to clean up, it's a violation of property maintenance, he's got thirty days. If it's the same way that I instituted it, he doesn't get a ticket after thirty days either. He gets another day and days, and then he gets sentenced. And let him clean up the property. He's getting all these rents, we're getting taxes, eighty-five thousand, and these people, let them live in peace. Please, I'm asking for common sense to reign here tonight. And like I, I don't wanna bore you, 'cause I've done it every meeting. I keep bringing articles, Lynn Hurts is doing it, North Darlington, all over. Industrial and warehouse spaces in high demand. The vacancy rate is at low, or low, uh, a long-time low. This is what we need. So please, do not declare this an area in need of redevelopment. And I think that some other people here will talk to you and tell you how fast you can rent industrial, commercial property.
Thank you. Jeff Mattingly. I've been all, that's my neighborhood. A few blocks down is where my building is. I've recently had half of my building, some six thousand square feet, looking for a new tenancy. I found it rapidly. I lost basically two weeks' worth of rent time, having had a tenant there for thirteen years. The industrial space is in high demand. It's become virtually unavailable. There's so many dump trucks and so many areas down there and service vehicles, because they're necessary to the excessive density. This is an industrial piece of property that you're seeking to convert to residential. And to correct you, Mayor, civil service titles recommend, uh, who, who gets hired and what departments based on population densities. Yes, look it up. I believe firemen are two-point-four per thousand.
That's recommended by this, that's only a recommendation, right?
It's quoted when we're hiring.
No, we're not hiring.
Well, you're not now, but when the density increases, you will.
It's a recommendation, that's what it draws.
Well, it's, 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 it's quoted chapter and verse at times when people are hired.
I know it's one-point-five for so many thousand people.
I appreciate that you understand that, yes.
I understand.
Uh, but the point being is, this building is in violation of safety and fire and quality of life, in terms of we talk about frequently. When buildings are not in the proper maintenance and they're an eyesore, there's ordinances that can be cited to clean up and make their properties. I have here pictures. That property where there's open space is fully, fully utilized. Some twenty-five dump trucks are on that property on the Cortland corner, going back behind that building. As Mr. Fran Tantoni stated, that industrial property is producing eighty-five thousand dollars in taxes and putting no kids in the school, requiring no additional hiring equipment, nothing like that. However, when you go down the railroad tracks, you look at the portion of the building that isn't utilized, that has been vandalized, where the fence that keeps the kids off the roof, because it is, the railroad tracks are at an incline as compared to the level of Cortland where it ultimately comes down to. They walk right on the roofs, set fires, make mischief, jump in people's, who own those houses' backyards, avoiding being chased by police and firemen and whoever else has to respond to emergencies that shouldn't be there. You're endangering our, our first responders. That simply is an issue where if they were to repair the fence, push back down the diamond plating that was covering up a loading dock for trains that no longer come back, that enables kids to climb into that portion of the building and wild animals live in there, that that would be remedied. There would be no more issue for our first responders or potentially the residents who lose property backs up to it. The fact of the matter is that it is high density, extremely high density, in a very unlikely place, a flood zone. It really does flood right there when you come around Cortland, off of Girolliman, and heavy flooding. And it can be accessible from the other side, and obviously, the residents who've lived there for all those years have negotiated those occasions when that was an imposition and chose to stay. The fact is that their lives would be dramatically changed with a property that's seventy-six feet deep, it's not even a hundred-foot requirement, talking a hundred-plus houses in there is insane. I mean, what is the reason for doing that when it doesn't meet any of the criteria for redevelopment, short of the fact that the industrial building isn't being properly maintained and there's a fire and safety hazard? Why has that been, why, this has come up time and time again when the, the subject came up on that property and planning and zoning. Nobody's responding. I'm sorry, but Mr. Di Lorenzo needs to get around that property, look at who's in there, and make sure that people are properly documented and that everything, the owner is making the property, the property useful and not, not an eyesore or, or a problem for our first responders and residents. It simply is not a good reason to redevelop it, because you may not like the way it looks. And a little bit of enforcement could change that dramatically. And it is, well, it's totally utilized to the degree that it's possible as the landlord left it. From what I understand, on the railroad side of that tracks, the infrastructure's been ripped out. And yet, there's heavy-duty electricity on the pole, right there at the end of Terry, that powers that building. Tremendous amount of electricity. So there, it certainly is a viable piece of property that doesn't require redevelopment, least of all, to convert industrial property to residential, exactly the opposite of what we need. So it just doesn't make any sense to the quality of life who are there or, or to the tax increases that will ultimately rest on the backs of the taxpayers. And to suggest in any way, shape, or form that the taxpayers should be involved in the development of that property is a miscarriage of social justice. It simply isn't warranted, it's wrong. And, and, you know, I fear tonight, that in view of all this common sense being given to you and the facts, here are pictures I will be happy to give you, shows it being fully utilized and the area that isn't is a hazard. That, that, you know, it's, it's simply a miscarriage of justice to allow this to go any further than to leave it right here and stop it. It's the wrong development for Belville, and it's certainly the wrong development for the common sense of what's rentable and what isn't in terms of purchasing, to have all those people jammed in that little area. It's simply wrong. And I'd like to give these to you. Excuse me. These pictures show clearly that the property's utilized, and we're getting our taxes paid from it. So please, just enforce the codes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, do you want to say something? Uh, Jeff, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Bob Schmidt, uh, lives with my wife Rhonda, the four-seventeen Cortland. Had the dubious honor of working a few years in that monolithic dwelling we're talking about. Back when they had printing businesses in there. So I'm very familiar with what's inside that place. Huge amount of space. We're one to, want to utilize it for whatever industrial business purpose. Definitely needs, uh, cleaning up, repair. I think that could be done, I think that's the answer. A solid building, it just needs to have some, uh, you know, some work done inside. And I think it would appeal to any number of businesses. Uh, were it ever come to the unfortunate situation where you decided to destroy the place, tear it down, demolish it for redevelopment, I don't think you'd wanna live within a mile of that area while that was going on. I think the air pollution, the, you know, the dust particles, whatever, from the destroying of the concrete, the chemicals from, I know there's still chemicals inside this place, the fumes from the machinery, the diesel fumes, the, uh, possible water contamination from chemicals within that building, within, within the machinery that they use. It would be a terrible, uh, tragedy. It would cause incredible, uh, problems for people living near the. Noise pollution, machinery, trucks moving in and out. So from that standpoint, I think it'd be best to either loan, develop it, repair it, tell the landlord to do his job. Anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Quite an experience working it.
Just a, a few comments. I was listening to what everybody said here. I wasn't aware that, uh, there was any residential development going on at that site, and it was mentioned a hundred and fifteen units. So all I did was some math here. Assuming that fifty of the units have one child, it costs about sixteen thousand dollars per pupil to educate, maybe even more, I don't know. So that sixteen thousand dollars times fifty pupils would cost, would, uh, cost to educate about fi, eight-hundred thousand dollars. So I would say, let's look at the math here, because what's gonna happen while the town collects X amount, I don't know the taxes, unless the town is gonna be collecting eight-hundred thousand dollars in taxes on a hundred and fifteen units, which I doubt, the burden is going to fall on the Board of Education, and guess who's stuck with the bills? I never realized it till right now, till I listened to everybody here. But economically, financially, it doesn't make sense. Cost versus the amount of students.
Would you, would you, would you want the council when they put the, uh, I can't, the, send tax in?
Essex Park. No.
How many kids came out of here, do you know?
Two-hundred something. I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
I'm telling you, four kids.
I don't know.
That's how many?
I'm telling you how many.
Four out of two-hundred and sixty units.
What about?
I have a way you're getting your fingers, that sixty, seventy kids are gonna come out of here.
No, no, you didn't listen to me. I said, assuming, I'm guessing, what is?
Well, I guess, I guess.
Okay, I guess, I'll say, I'll guess none. But this is why, that's ridiculous. This is why we're very disgusted.
We're going by what you're studying what's done.
Yeah, I don't know about, that's why I'm asking you the questions. We're looking into it, that's why we're, we're reviewing, I mean, let me ask you something. What other developments do you have in town? How many children do they have? Anybody have an idea?
Where?
Bridge Brook, I don't know, I'm asking you questions.
I don't, I don't know Bridge Brook, but I do know Essex Park. Essex Park is really the newest development that we have up there. It's two-hundred and seventy units, and it got like four or five kids.
No, I'm just asking you questions.
But that's it. And that's part of the stuff. Sixty kids are gonna come out of here.
No, I'm just looking.
You're just generating more controversy.
I'm just, no, I'm just looking to say, if you have so many children that are going to be there, because I hope the taxes and charges overcome that number.
We all know that, we're pretty similar.
Well, I, well, I don't know that, that's why I'm asking.
Talking eighty-five thousand versus.
I'm just listening to what everybody said, and I'm only asking questions.
We're not talking about a half a replacement.
Sir.
This is Constantino, three ninety-one Cortlandt Street. I don't think it's a good idea for residential development there. It's too small of a lot, and it would be a too crowded area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think that the project would be good because of the parking situations down there too. And it would infringe on the people's, their life, to have something like that in back of them. I mean, I wouldn't want it in the back of my house. I wouldn't wanna have that, I mean.
I don't think you would want, and, and I'm not saying what the plan of work is gonna do, but would you want all those trucks behind you in the yard here?
Well, that is a bother then, they've been there for years, but if you, they're only parked, there's not people living there, looking in your window at your house. And you don't know, and you're talking about up there at Essex, whatever it is.
Essex Street.
Okay? Maybe there's young couples there, didn't start a family yet. You don't know if they're gonna have kids. You don't know if they're gonna have kids.
Usually, they go in here as starters, and then they move out.
Not necessarily, because you can't sell a house in Belville that easily anymore. People come in here, when they hear the taxes, they walk away. I saw it across the street from my house many times. So don't think that she's a teeny young man, they're gonna stay and go up. They can't get out, can't get out.
Make a motion, post public chair, move to final adoption.
Make a motion, post public here, move to final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Prosser Alley.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No.
Malga.
Yes.
Nattari.
No.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumover.
No.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Make a motion, make a motion of the public here.
Second.
Councilmember Prosser Alley.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Malga.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumover.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Sir. Mr. Mayor, maybe I should address City Manager. Pursuant to the amendment number eight on the ordinance thirty-two twenty, what can I tell the folks at Five-Eleven as far as getting tickets from here on out on the north side? Are they going to remove the signs?
It takes twenty days.
It takes twenty days?
Twenty days from today.
From today? So in the next twenty days, they can still get tickets after twenty days, as you stop it. After twenty days. That's the new ordinance takes effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, it's Frances. Tell me. Back about two months ago, I had mentioned about the parking lot across Belmont Avenue next to the Long Trail. Cross Belmont Avenue and Washington Avenue, the parking lot that was putting in this valley.
You went down here?
Yes. Well, there's no lights. It's very dark in there. That you park there at night. I thought they were supposed to put lighting up in that parking lot.
You mean on Washington Avenue, correct?
Yes. I thought they were supposed to put lighting in there. It's very, very dark.
I thought it was like maybe it's not sufficient amount of lights, but we'll have public service look into it.
All right. And another thing I wanted to bring up, our garbage contractor, when it's the first day of garbage and even the second day, what are they supposed to do something?
What are they supposed to do?
Our original, they come around your first day of garbage, say, they go on Monday.
Okay. Monday and the first...
Say Monday and Thursday. What are they supposed to do?
Regular garbage on Monday and these on Monday too.
And then bulk stuff on...
I hope it's all Wednesday, Wednesday.
No, no, no. Garbage day.
I'm sorry, the second. The second pickup. Are you talking about the second? For bulk?
In your car.
Garbage.
Mayor, the clerk, the clerk, turn for me. On your second garbage day, that's when you put your bulk stuff.
All right. Well, I think you want to go out and let somebody inspect the garbage trucks when they come in. Because when people are putting out, when they rip out their lawns, they rip out all these bushes, they're putting them out and they're picking them up. They're picking up concrete. They're picking up whatever is out there. And then some people, certain people, they're bringing their garbage pails in their driveways for them. Where other people, their garbage pails are thrown all over the streets. So I think you want to talk to the garbage contractors because it's not fair to all the other people out there. And I've seen it all over town because I walk in the mornings. They're picking stuff up that shouldn't be picked up. I saw an incident where one of the garbage collector, one of the men couldn't pick up this concrete turd bag and put it in the truck. So the homeowner came out and did it. So you better talk to them because it's not fair. We're paying all the waste that's going out there. So please check into and let them check into the garbage trucks.
Mayor, council, my name is Joe Farah, Fifty-Three Salter Place. I'm here tonight regarding an issue that I had with a water service line at my property on Fifty-Three Salter Place. This took place two years ago, okay? If you recall, Salter Place was repaved previous to that. Hundred-year-old pipes. This is Silver Lake, City of Norwalk. All right, so of course, Belville wants nothing to do with the pipes, any repair work, or any further issues because we do not pay the City of Belville for the water supply. In two thousand and fourteen, I had an issue with the water service. It's a multifamily home. A tenant called me and informed me that we had no water in the house. When I got to the house, it occurred, it showed that there was water trickling, not enough to sustain a shower, to do any laundry or any other further stuff. But yes, there was water trickling, okay, because I've heard in some cases that it had to be no water. But water trickling. So it was a water emergency for this service line to be repaired. At the time, I contacted the then-town manager, Mr. Kevin Esposito, and he had informed me that he spoke to Mr. Harris, the town engineer, the DPW, and they were a hundred percent certain that this was Norwalk Water Pipes and they don't touch them. Regardless of the situation, emergency, non-emergency, they do not touch these pipes. No problem. Called Norwalk. They came out. The work shall be done as an emergency. I need a brand-new service line. One is copper line, bottom line. Four thousand dollars later, okay, got no choice. I got to foot the bill. Fast forward, yesterday and today. Belmont Avenue, between Bullfield Avenue and I believe it's out, closed down, the entire block. Belville, DPW, six vehicles, dump trucks, manpower like you wouldn't believe. Excuse me, gentlemen, what are you doing? Oh, we're doing a service line for Forty-Eighth Belmont Avenue. Oh, really? I didn't know you guys do it. I thought it was the City of Norwalk. Oh, yeah, well, this was an emergency. Oh, okay, yeah. We also knew one of the council members. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So now I'm here with my four thousand dollar bill and I would like to be reimbursed due to the fact that apparently the double DPW does repair the City of Norwalk water main in the case of emergencies, which I clearly have stated here as the bill, with my initial security deposit check that I had to pay, you know, and it's all listed here as it's an emergency. That's pretty much all I have. That's why I'm here.
Joe, you're absolutely right. What we did, we were informed not to touch any water pipes, all right, that are controlled by the City of Norwalk, pipes in Silver Lake, all right. We did have a situation where homeowner did not have any water, all right. We called the City of Norwalk. Actually, I spoke to Jack Kelly, who's the administrator there. And he gave us permission because the gentleman had no water for two days. My understanding is, our practice was in the past, that if Norwalk came out and made the repair and gave the homeowner a bill, that bill could be submitted to the township because you shouldn't be treated any differently than anyone else in town who doesn't get water from the City of Norwalk.
That's correct.
If you give me your information, I'll be happy to investigate after you. But we did in fact receive permission to go there, which we previously did not have. But where we have our residents that have no water, we need to step in. We need to get them water.
I understand.
I hear what you're saying.
I appreciate it. It was, you know, bottom line, I had trickling water in a multifamily house. When I say trickle, you can't sustain a shower. It's an emergency. So I know the guy who's out of water for two days. So was I.
Not questioning that.
It took twenty days for me to get Norwalk out there, so I believe you.
And that was long.
Never hear a tenant that doesn't have water for twenty days.
Two years ago?
I'll forward the calls if you want.
Okay. Two years ago, Joe?
You know, no, it was a year and eleven months.
Get me all your information.
And this was right after we did the, you know, the streets over there and there was water issues after. There's all parts of the street dug up right after those repairs. And it's a shame because you guys did such a beautiful job on the cobblestone curves, the brand-new street. And the street looked beautiful. And then it gets dug up every... Go look at the streets right now, what they're doing with the water reline and everything like that. It's a shame, you know. It really is. You got to see it. But, you know, I would just hope you guys consider replenishment, you know, for this emergency.
It was not two days they had no water. It was two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That they were borrowing water from each other.
I got twenty days. I made my call in the beginning about COVID and they finally came out on COVID-20 and I had to go down there.
Whether it's two days, twenty days, or two weeks, people without water, it's unacceptable.
It's a problem.
It's unacceptable. It's a health issue.
I went to see Councilor Burke. She has copies of my paperwork. If you need any from me. Please, you know, contact me as soon as possible, but I would appreciate your consideration in this session.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Shawell, Eighteenth Street. First, I'd like to go back to the garbage situation. The garbage men on street cleaning day leave the garbage can in the street. So that means that our streets can't be cleaned because they leave them right at the curb. They empty them and leave them at the curb. So garbage bin seeder, the lifter comes by and he just goes around it so the streets don't get pushed, okay? Next, I'd like to thank Mr. Tucci for the shop rate resolution here of getting them shopping carts done. We're going to appreciate it in our ward because they were all over the place. And next, I also have, we talked about the garage sale last time. I'm glad it's going to be implemented, but I wish we would have had it on a separate day, that nobody didn't have it because nothing in Belville is going to be together and that's going to be a lot. And I brought some flyers that we talked about last time. I can give these to you. And we could always use them because we always have that garage sale at Wesley's. That go-tail at Wesley's all the time. And one other thing is we talked about the trees on Beach Street and Little Street to be trimmed. Is there any resolution on that? We'll go with that.
We're going to get there. We're going to get there. We have many needs. We're trying to address them all as soon as possible. Just be a little patient with us. We will get there.
Well, it's my neighbor, you know, they come to me for everything.
Those are public trees. We'll handle them.
Okay. Thank you.
Ponichin Orton, Six-Six Branchwood Drive. Mr. Tucci, I know we had spoke last week concerning the handicap space and you wanted to validate if it has to be twenty-two feet, but we haven't spoken as of yet. And also the lieutenant never contacted me back because he was going to validate if it was acceptable for the apartment complex to be charging eighty to a hundred dollars per month, when there's only sixty spaces and two hundred, over two hundred units. So I haven't heard anything back about anything.
I know Chief Minikini, who was here, and the traffic department were in fact looking into that. I will find out what that resolution was.
Have you tried to get a spot in the parking lots?
Yes, you got to try and charge. There's no handicap spot. No. None of that. So, no.
The chief has all the particulars on it. If you'd like, I'll be happy to get it, sure.
What was your answer?
Six-Six Branchwood Drive.
Sixty-six?
Yes.
They can't put it in front of your house?
I have a question.
That's what she's...
Yeah. The resident said it has to be twenty-two feet. I don't know how high that is.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are they allowed to try doors on parking? Because I pay fifteen hundred dollars for breaks and they don't park. And that's ridiculous. I mean, this is my first time.
Yeah, they do it. Corrigan does it. They all do. They charge all the tenants to park in their lot.
And you say first come, first served. And that's ridiculous.
They do it on Harrison Street, Seventy-One House. They charge the tenants there. In fact, they're trying to charge a tenant who had a handicap spot.
Well, they don't have a handicap spot.
Well, they come back to the new building. Just a great day.
First, I'd just like to ask something. The developer had come here and wants a build down there in Portland Street. His attorney was Mr. Cazarelli. Should Captain Cazarelli have voted tonight?
He's not the attorney.
The appearance of a conflict.
He is, but he's not the attorney. He's not the attorney on record.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. But the ethics law says a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest.
There is no appearance. He's gone. Attorney Cazarelli is no longer involved. So there is...
So he's gone then?
I mean, whatever the circumstance was, he's no longer the attorney.
But his family member was still a participant in that situation. He came here representing there.
That's right.
Well...
Well, he's no longer the attorney, so if there was a perception or a real conflict, it no longer exists.
He should have accused himself.
Okay. I really have my opinion.
Now, this gentleman here, Mr. Farah, that came is just another perfect example why we should not be paving streets before we clean and reline. A couple of years ago, we did home tree pull-ups. There's about eight or nine breaks in the brand-new street.
Did nobody disagree with you? No disagreement?
I know nobody disagrees with me, but you don't do it. You don't do it. Now, in regards to the garbage, what my wife was talking about, I was doing the job. And I don't want to give addresses or not, but even on bulk, we're not allowed to pick up concrete, right? Why do certain, I'm doing a job on certain streets and the owner or whoever lives in the property comes out with a black bag and all of a sudden about sixteen, seventeen concrete blocks and some broken sidewalks get put into the bulk truck, which is not supposed to take concrete. So can we notify the contractor of this process?
It's already noted, yes. We will absolutely.
Can you also do something about, now you talk about the condition of our town. Washington Avenue, we want to clean it up. It used to be, we put out our recyclables of Washington Avenue on Tuesday night. And when I opened my business in the morning, like they're doing the garbage properly, the cans are empty. We put out the recycling. They don't pick them up. Now, this has gone on for the past nine or ten months. They don't pick them up in the middle of the afternoon. So on Wednesday days, you got all this recycling. We got our Main Street loaded with recycling from all the businesses all day long. They don't pick them up till three o'clock in the afternoon. Why can't we go back to the morning? They used to pick it off early. Ever that, because I opened up seven-thirty, eight o'clock, the cans were empty. Now that the recycling is staying out there, the garbage is picked up early. When I go there, open up, I got an empty can. I bring my cans in. But the recycling is left out there all day long. Why has that changed?
We will speak to. I mean, it's, I guess what they're rooting for. We'll talk to them.
And I'd just like to ask something else. In the conversation here tonight, it come up something about the Branchwood Gardens and redevelopment. What was that about?
There was... Absolutely. We had a meeting with the ownership of the Branchwood Gardens and they're considering, all right, redeveloping and reconfiguring the apartments that they own. And I believe there's some four hundred or whatever apartments. And they just wanted to come in and see, you know, whether or not we were amenable to it. And basically what we told them was, you need to show us something. You need to show us something. We'll take a look at it. We'll evaluate it and we'll let you know.
Well, hopefully, because I know some tenants there, it appears that, and the friend, Captain Morgan Burke, led to clean it up years ago. It appears, to what I'm hearing from tenants there, it appears that the same landlord is back again there.
That I'm not sure.
Well, I'm going to draw a board or his, whatever. But anyway, what's happening is there, it's not just people complaining. You've got a guy going in, a trap on the sink is ready. They're going in, they're paying. And all fix up these things. They finally throw these people out. So just a word about, if this guy comes in and he wants to knock down these two stories to put up five-story buildings, I hope, and I'll spell it for you if you can't, don't understand, the word two-letter word. And oh, you don't need any more high-density stuff in this town. So if he wants to jump on the damn rail, and if you pay attention, I brought you a newspaper article from the financial page about a month or two ago. "The Bubble Is About To Break." All this residential construction, they have it, Bullfield Center right next to the train station, they're not fully rented. I talked to a real, a good friend of mine in Montclair, they're having trouble with all those apartments in Montclair. They're not renting this building, everything. The bubble is about to break. So don't get us in the tail end of this bubble. We're going to be stuck with this stuff. You see, nothing has ever worked. Not one single development, you're afraid, we're still waiting for the Washington Avenue. Eight-story monster, the eighty units, that was going to be. I understand that one partner took off. He bought, sold his share out. I understand the last partner, if I'm here and think correct, is having trouble getting financing. The financing is drying up. They can't even finance that monster, the American dream, which I think is going to be aptly after the American Nightmare. Nobody wants a load of money. And guess what? If you read the papers, you know who they're fielding to try to get the last eight-hundred-and-eighty-five million? The Economic Development Authority of Wisconsin. Nobody in New Jersey wants to give them the money for that monster thing. So please, this is the township, this is the township of Belville. The township, nice little town. We don't want to make it a city. So learn the word no. And I sat in someone's chair. And I sat in someone's chair, and I know what you go through, day after day. It wasn't a single week that some attorneys, some developers, some consultants wanted something from the town. And I said, I said, "I'll meet you for lunch, I'll meet you for coffee." I said, "I'm a skinny bastard, I don't eat much, and I don't have lunch with anybody."
That's why we haven't come into the manager's office with a group of people.
They, so, we want to say, no.
So we don't get any Solomon left?
This development...
People bringing them in?
Speaking of Solomon, go back, where's that?
He left.
Oh, he left.
Some of his parts are left.
Yes, so please, let's not, if this, if this guy wants to come in and, and come in with some high-density, not, the answer is no. Clean up your apartment, renovate the apartment, and he's getting absolutely, last time you were tricked, you heard, this lady's getting fifteen hundred dollars rent to get over there. Twice what I'm getting for my beautiful apartment that I made.
Man, I know you want to speak.
I'm just gonna call him again. All right. Um, just got, I got a, got a castle onto the garbage issue. Listen, I've seen the trucks come back around to areas they've already picked up, to pick up things that they shouldn't be picking up. And so, the, the idea is, this isn't the first time we've gone down this road with this problem, and it requires periodic renewal, that they're doing it the right way, and in the right order, and the scheduling is proper for the need of the town. Uh, if I may, Mayor, uh, Mr. Tucci, uh, Walnut Street is not one of those streets that's dependent upon the state's approval. Uh, there was three streets, I forget the, uh, what was in the paper that said it was dependent upon the state and, and what they were going to offer to offset the cost to the town. Walnut Street is not one of them, correct?
Uh, I don't have the list in front of me.
Well, I have one of those nifty signs at the end of the block that was for, you know...
They are great signs, aren't they?
Yeah, they, they look beautiful, we could do, before the election.
Right.
Yeah.
Before, during, and after, and no, they absolutely were not.
Right, right, no, I understand.
Absolutely not. If they're, if they're, if they're streets that were not funded by the DOT, and it's, it's a locally funded street, then it's, and it's included in the ordinance, then it will in fact move forward.
All right, well, the point being is, point being is, I have a, a friend of mine on the beginning of the block, who's been there for twenty-six years, and he said the last time the town did anything on the street was twenty-five years ago, the first year he moved in.
They must've plowed it.
Uh, well, difficult for them. Well, when you're down to the sub-road, and I would invite anyone on this council, including the recently excused councilman of the second ward, Mr. Robel, to drive down Walnut Street and test your suspension. And truly, truly, it is a mess, you're going down the sub-road. It needs to be dealt with, and certainly, there's been plenty of recent water main breaks in the last five years on the street. So please, make sure, because I had nothing to do with it, I didn't sign the petition, I wasn't part of the process. I told them if all I would do was hinder the process, don't involve me. So, then, that's that. Is, is the library opening, I think it was the, uh, the twenty-fourth of September? Is that still on schedule, do we know?
Yes, yes.
It is? That's wonderful, just checking. I'd like to hear that, that's wonderful.
It's open now.
It's open now? So go through the front door?
And it's beautiful.
Wow, I'm gonna check it out. Okay, so I don't have to go down the back stairs into the mix and return the books? That's great. Um, Washington Avenue, we, we talk a lot about streetscape, and, you know, what the state wants to do with it, and their bike lane that would cause wreak havoc in the town in a big way. Uh, and also, our investment of half a million dollars into the beautiful new streetlights and things. I think at the last meeting, which was about three or four weeks ago now, right, that, uh, I brought up the fact that that telephone trunk line right on the corner of Girahalaman, you know, southeast corner, has been laying there for probably since ten years ago when you were, you were manager. And also, the, those dispensers of those...
So nobody, nobody addressed that from the last time I left? Is that, is that the point? What's the point?
Hey, forgive me if it has stood around until you got here, but yes, it is your problem.
Well, I'll probably take care of another store.
I, I would, I would love to see...
Mr. Harris already has it, and I believe he's already called and is, is addressing that.
All right, 'cause there is a lot of Verizon work going on in Bellville.
Right.
So, those yellow dispensers that hand out free literature that are supposed to be news...
Yep, we, we can't stop. I wish we could, but we can't.
Well, and, and I would like to just say that, yes, there is a publication there, uh, yeah, and one of the yellow dispensers that does put out the, the, the newsprint along with various questionable moral aspects in its advertisement. Uh, but the saturation's tremendous in Bellville.
I agree with you.
And, and also, like, there, there's one in front of the, uh, the motel's restaurant, which is not a bus stop. It's not, you, I mean, there's, there's like three or four of these things around Girahalaman. The saturation's tremendous. Some of them are not newsprint. Some of them have nothing but smut advertisement in them. And I just picked up about two weeks ago, about twenty-five of their newsprints that periodically gets thrown on the ground in front of, in front of the post office. Kids or whomever pulls them out, throws them to wind blows, they're all over Washington Avenue, and it looks like crap. I mean, really bad. Is there a requirement to have one in front of?
I don't think there's a requirement, but I don't think we could stop it.
Oh, well, actually, actually, I understand that there are ordinances that allow for them to be in specific places, like at bus stops, and...
You mean the newsstand?
Well, they're supposed to be news, some of them are not news, but the fact is, they are a problem, and there's lots of towns around us that don't have that problem on their...
I, I agree with you, we should check on the other towns' ordinance to see if it's not...
Yeah, please do, because, I mean, this is insane. We spend all this money, and we chart a plan...
Uh, no, I agree.
To bring up the quality of our, our, you know, we really need to address this, and if there's any way that we have to have, I mean, if we have to have them, any way to reduce them, so that there aren't so many, I mean, it looks like...
You're right, I'm definitely gonna look in there, I'm gonna check it up.
And, and, uh, last but not least here, lined street crossings. Now, you come down, I come down Girahalaman every morning from Garden that I take to work. Kids crossing all, all over on Girahalaman, and, and Girahalaman's our street. It doesn't, it's not a matter of having to go through the county like it should be at the end of Fairway, where kids en masse cross that street to get to the bus. You know, and it's really dangerous. We should definitely, if we have to come up with a, a town proposal, with everybody to attend a meeting of the county, to ensure that they cross, they line our streets like they do every other town in S.S. County. Are, are kids worth less, are, you know, are the lives and safety of our, our elders and people who can't jockey traffic go...
I don't think we have to answer that question.
Yeah, no, you know, you know, but I, I have to belabor it, because, I mean, I've only brought this up over the past twenty years. Now, Girahalaman's our street.
Yeah.
We have weak lines in many of our intersections, which certainly, when somebody's standing in an intersection waiting to cross the street, and the traffic's whipping by, when there's a strong-lined street, they recognize the law, and, I mean, just, like, uh... I lobbied for years to get that crossing of Bellville Avenue at, at the park, at the end of Garden. I worked hard to get that, and over years to complain about that, and then ultimately, it, it, it did happen in a much greater way. I wanted, uh, "You're not allowed to kill the pedestrians" sign in the middle of the street. And just as today, I'm waiting on Bellville Avenue to turn left onto Garden to head north, and this, a woman who walks in the park every day is standing there with the lights flashing, and one after another. They're whipping by there, and to the point where I was ready to turn into the traffic just to stop her. It pissed me off like I can't tell you. You hear these lights, and everything's flashing, and they, this woman is standing off the curb. It's ridiculous that that would happen, and I would ask that the police, once again, I know Mr. Minchin is not here any longer, chief, but to set up, use, it was used many times as, as a baited trap with, to, to catch people ignoring that. And we're not a whistle-stop, and I don't care where they're going, our pedestrians are worth that effort. So set it up, please, contact the police department and trap it again. And if the ticket isn't strong enough, raise the fee, because lever it is, it disregards it. This woman's standing in the street, and on her lane, they were threatening to kill her.
I happened to go by the high school at two-thirty yesterday.
I can only imagine.
The crossing guard is out in the middle of the street, we're stopped, and this woman kept creeping up on her. I'm like, "You gotta be kidding me, they don't even stop."
Drive-by, and that, yeah. Get the cops to drive by.
I said, "Please, I, this one, do something about having a car there."
Now, but on Girahalaman, getting back to Girahalaman, there are huge amounts of kids cross Girahalaman to get to the middle school as well as the grammar school, and we need those, we need the hornblower and, and the wit, mark across four-way the intersection, it's ours, with strong markings that show that you're not allowed to kill the kids crossing the street. When they're in the crosswalk, you stop, and that's it. I'm finished. We get off, we get off my soapbox.
Frank Fleishman, one thirty-two Franklin Street.
That's all right, I'll get you next.
I'm sorry, no, no.
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One thirty-three Franklin Street, Bellville. Mr. Tucci?
Yes.
Hopefully, oh, am I yelling at you who finally listens? So the Silver Lake...
Typically, yelling doesn't work, but rational conversation does work, yes.
But I have such a sweet tone though.
You do, yes, you do. You do, a melodic voice, yes.
So, see, work is going to be started?
Very soon, very soon.
This week?
Hopefully, they're gonna be mobilizing this week, getting materials in there, I spoke with Mr. Harris a while ago. Uh, they want him that over the next couple of days, they'll be bringing materials inside the building, uh, to get started.
Very fabulous, so by the next meeting, we should have...
Don't, don't say yes, Nora.
I have to say...
But I'm gonna play logic.
It is our expectation.
So by the next meeting on the twenty-seventh, we're hopefully going to have some of the work started.
I, I, I would agree with that.
We can agree on that.
We ask you to.
Okay, again, I bring this to the council's attention, the people that are bringing their cars, again, cutting in on some Magnolia. I beg of you, one camera, that's all you, the millions you could make on the tickets alone, you would get. The revenue that this town would get, 'cause at least four to five cars every time, they cut across on the other part of Franklin, you know, and just, and just not on Franklin too, but just walk over the place. So please, if, if it's a county road situation, call Joe D.
Oh, yeah.
Yell at him. If you guys won't yell at him, I'll be more than happy to yell at him, I've known him since I was a kid. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Scott Higgins, Lakeview Avenue. Thank you, uh, Councilor Kennedy, for Saturday, had a good time. The, uh, veterans naming, you know, Florence Street and the church. But, um, being a veteran myself, I'm a member of the American Legion here in Bellville, and I go to Ballville, I go to one oh-five and the two eighty-eight. And, um, with the two eighty-eight, I'll go on Avenue, the adjacent spot is owned by the town. The, uh, building was demolished a couple of years ago, but just needs to be, like, GI'd and cleaned up, the long cut, 'cause it's kind of discouraging, and their main revenue there is to rent that hall, and four feet away, there's a lot of, it's always trash there, and some weeds. Now, I don't want, you know, rodents and stuff running around that building either. You know, except for that fun there, you know, I'm like thirty years younger than everybody, too. But, uh, it just needs to be GI'd and stuff. All right, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Frank Fleishman, one thirty-two Franklin Street. Um, I almost feel bad bringing this up now, because there's been so much talk tonight, you know? Yale's neighborhood might be completely transformed by redevelopment, we've had people with parking problems, that sort of thing, but I feel that what I, you know, what I'm gonna tell you is a little bit more specific to just a matter of civic mindedness, okay? After the election, my friend Mary Higgins basically told me, she said, "Frank, I don't think I'm going to be back on the zoning board. I don't think I'm gonna be reappointed." At that time, I thought she was a little paranoid, and I said, "Mary, don't worry about it." I said, "Number one, I don't think they're gonna be, I don't think anyone's gonna be petty, so petty to not reappoint you just because you ran in an election, and secondly, I'm sure if they do, they're going to send something official to you saying, you know, 'Thank you, we no longer need your services.'" Okay. Um, Mary and I really didn't speak over, over the summer at all, and, um, July came, and the realization meeting came, that sort of thing, and I didn't hear anything about my appointment, um, my appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, okay? Said to myself, "Okay, they're busy." I spoke to Vinnie once, and I just said, "You know, hey, with the stories, I'll talk to some people, we'll see what's going on." July, we weren't around all that much, August came, you know, I said, "Okay, the council's a little busy with the budget," or preparing the firehouse, wherever it might be, okay? September comes, and just this week, I get an email from the secretary of the Historic Preservation Commission. It was a group email, I believe, just saying very simply, it's a bit funny, you know? "Meeting nine fifteen, sixteen, six thirty, historic, historic meeting, let me know if you will attend." And so I wrote back, I said, "I will be there, thank you very much." I get a email today that says, "Um, Frank, you are no longer on the historical commission. They did not reappoint you, so you're not being a senior member." Okay. Um, I don't think, and I, I responded back to her, I said, "Thank you for letting me know of that, but I don't think it was..." I, I'm just sorry that you're the one who had to tell me this, because I really think that should've come from the council, or from Mr. Mayor, whatever the case may be, okay? It's common courtesy, I believe, that someone, you know, that if civic-minded people are appointed to boards, and for whatever reason, and, you know, you don't want any explanation or anything like that, um, you know, but it would be, it would've been courteous, I believe, to at least get something right and say, "Mr. Fleishman, you know, due to whatever, you know, or don't even say that, your services are no longer required on the historical preservation board, thank you very much." I hear you guys complain that there aren't people who are volunteering for these boards and these committees and sort of thing. When you don't even show common courtesy to somebody, um, and I'm not just making this about myself, I'm also working, you know, correct about how Miss Higgins was treated on that. Um, you gotta wonder, you gotta wonder why, no, you really shouldn't wonder why people are a little reluctant to put their names forward and say, "Okay, I wanna help this town." Okay. There are people in this town who care very deeply about it. We've lived here almost twenty years now, um, and I love Bellville. I mean, I grew up in Glen Ridge, and I will take Bellville over Glen Ridge six days a week, twice on Sundays, only because it's, you know, it's, it's a much different environment, and, you know, I feel, you know, I feel valued here, I feel, you know, I feel like it's a good community. But if I can't even get the common courtesy of somebody calling, even calling me and saying, "Okay, we really don't want your help anymore," why do you wonder why people, why people won't volunteer?
Sir, you're, you're right, and we'll try to rectify that in the very near future. Uh, we'll have our town clerk do a letter, instead of anybody that's not reappointing.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Diane Rockwell, four oh three Portland Street, Mayor Hembo, Councilman Natare, Phil, Tom. I want to say thank you very much for these stop signs on the intersection of Natare and Portland Street. I worked quite a long time, uh, coming to meetings and requesting and pressing. I've talked with a couple of town managers in getting this done. Um, I came to the town manager, uh, the town meeting in June, asked what the, uh, progress was, and I was told that it would, it would be done shortly. Um, as the end of the school year was coming to an end, children were going to be running around in, on the streets. I made a phone call on that Friday, uh, several phone calls, as to when definitely the signs would be put up. Mr. Tucci, I'm very disappointed. Your office was one of the ones that I called. Now, you, um, earlier you said yelling at you doesn't get you to be motivated, talking nice to you. Um, what does motivate you? Because I had to leave a message, I had to leave a message with Rosemary, a detailed message. It took you a month and a half to two months to receive a call back from your office, from Rosemary, where the signs put up. Rosemary, where the signs put up, where the signs put up. Are you kidding me? I had to call the mayor's office, I had to call Mr. Natarie, I had to call DPW, and I had to call Mr. Gromahman in regards to these, two months ago. And they, and they acted on it. I had to wait two months for your phone call. Now, the difference is between Mr. Esposito and I, we didn't always see eye to eye, but he would always call me 24 to 48 hours. One Sunday afternoon, I'm driving down the shore and I get a phone call, hi Diane, I'm calling to let you know, who is this? Diane, this is, this is Ms. Kevin Esposito, blah, blah, blah. Wait a minute, you don't even have the common courtesy to call me back on a timely basis or to sit there and have a conversation directly with me. I find that highly insulting, especially the fact that you were hired as an interim town manager and then hired at a salary of $150,000. You can't even take the time out to be in the office because you clearly told everyone in this audience, you were committed, you were dedicated, and you were able to handle the position. You can't even call it a concerned citizen back? That I had to place several other phone calls within the township, in the departments, to get something done that was already approved? I'm totally, totally annoyed with you. I really am. It, it shows lack of professionalism.
And that's, that's your right. I don't, I don't know why it wasn't handled, because my procedure is, after these meetings, I go through my notes, I call the department heads, and I dole out the responsibilities and things that need to be accomplished. If for whatever reason, my office took two months to get back to you, then I will apologize.
No, you took me, you took two months to call me back.
Excuse me, excuse me, I listen to you, let me finish. I will apologize to you for that, but I do respond and I do react to every request that's made of me, and I am in fact committed, because we're doing more things now than have been done here in years.
Well, I apologize for giving you more respect than what you deserve, because what I saw of you reacting, you don't have to deserve that.
That's your prerogative, that's your prerogative, and you can feel however you want.
Now, the other matter I would like to say, I would like to appeal to the council and ask that you step up in alleviating the financial burden set upon its citizens who support this town by discontinuing any further proposed residential expansion. And start examining and procuring accountable development of retail and industrial evolution. Since the 2000, before they even started the development over at Clifton Commons, I came to the board of the town meeting, and I said, as they're starting to develop that, we need to get on the ball, and we need to start developing the prime properties that we have down on Main Street, over by, um, uh, the other properties. Belleville sat on the wayside.
I disagree.
We lost, we lost Walmart.
We've been trying to develop Main Street since 2006. We've had numerous meetings with Mr. Finkelstein, with congressmen, with senators, with developers. And he just wants to cooperate. That's the only way I could put it.
Essex County, Essex County has one of the highest taxes, not only in the state, but it's above the national rate. And to sit there and continue to think about residential properties, I personally went over to three luxury communities in a neighboring town. I asked them what their occupancy was and what their rates were. I sat down with the three leasing offices over there, luxury communities that offer amenities and a better school system and town services. This is a prime rental season. Their occupancy and their tenancy is down, because people are moving out of this area, out of this area. So to sit and to continue to think, we have a development coming up on the corner of Franklin Avenue and Belleville Avenue, residential properties. You're sitting and talking about more residential property down on Washington Avenue. You're talking about the residential property possibly behind my, behind my, on Cortlandt Street. This is ridiculous. The homeowners in this town cannot support this anymore. New Jer, Belleville has one of the highest poverty rates in the whole state of New Jersey. Walmart moved out of Belleville, turned around and walked away. Excuse me? Speak up, because I don't hear your muttering.
I'm saying, how you making a statement like that? Where, where does that come out?
Where does that come out? It's publicized.
Huh?
It's publicized.
I haven't seen it.
And you sit and you.
And we're one of the lowest poverty rates in the state?
No, we don't have one of the lowest poverty, we have one of the highest poverty rates in this state.
Where's the state?
It's not the lowest.
Where's that?
I mean, turn around, you don't believe it.
No, I don't believe that.
The income in our town, the median income in our town cannot support the owning a home, can't support anything in this town anymore. We've lost, we've lost Walmart, we've lost BJ's, we've lost Lowe's, all this property and everything else, and all these businesses, big spots.
You're right, you're right, because of one developer that don't want to cooperate, and when we try to pull eminent domain, everybody get up and scream.
Eminent domain? Yes, because you're looking to take homes away on Roosevelt.
You're forcing to do something.
Talking about Finkelstein specifically. It has nothing to do with homes, I mean.
Eminent domain, Mr. Robel, I sat there, I came up, I was one of the people also. Those residential homes on Roosevelt, you were looking to take away by eminent domain.
No way, no way.
We're talking about one piece of property.
Finkelstein's property, that's what it was.
I was there, and I was waiting until that sign.
You don't want us to do it. Want to finish up? Want to finish up, please, Congress? You were talking for 10 minutes, want to finish up?
10 minutes? No, it wasn't 10 minutes.
Yes, it was. Anybody else who wants to speak?
Thank you. Mary Higgins, 148 Franklin Avenue.
You got to speak up for me, I'm sorry.
At the previous council meeting, I brought to your attention, Mr. Tucci, and you wrote it down, that a non-political campaign sign for road repair was obstructing pedestrian traffic on a sidewalk on Brighton Avenue, and I asked to have it removed. That was over a month ago. You wrote it down, you took notes, and as you said to this young lady over here, after the meeting, you checked your notes and you get things done. Well, the sign's still lying there right now.
Maybe I missed that one.
All right, not only that, the promises on the sign line on the sidewalk were not kept during the stated timeframe, summer 2016. No improvements or repairs on curbs, driveways, aprons, sidewalks, sewers, milling, and paving. And by the way, Miss Burke, on some of your campaign literature, you said you had 30 streets repaired. Could you tell me what apron repair is? I don't know, nobody else answered her. Can you tell me what that means? Apron repair, what is the apron?
First of all, you should be talking about all the good things we do.
Now, can you just tell me what the apron, it's a technical term, I don't know what it is, but you had in your campaign literature, you happily had 30 streets repaired, including the aprons, but I don't know what an apron is. Could you tell me what it is? Because this is your war.
It's a cut in the driveway.
It's a cut in the driveway?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's not beautiful. Okay, thank you, because I really didn't know.
I'm sorry that I have to.
Thank you, all right, that's very nice, but sewers, milling, and paving, nothing was done. So what exactly was the purpose of those ward-specific, non-political political signs that were erected three days before the main council election? And the only ones put up in the first ward were in the vicinity of my house. Would you please answer that? Mr. Tucci, I'm talking to you, sir.
All questions, all questions get the record through the chair.
You approved the signs here, you approved the signs, you ordered the signs, you had them up, you said, you guys were all innocent.
Say something positive once in a while.
I'm talking to you.
No streets were repaired because of two reasons. Number one, if you were paying attention, our budget was adopted this evening, we passed the ordinances on second reading, you need the 20-day estoppel period to go through, and then the money becomes available. The state of New Jersey, if you read the papers, all right, and everybody alleges they read the papers, froze how much money in street funding? Millions of dollars. We had over $500,000 that they're, they frozen, that we can't get work done. Okay? So that's the reason why nothing has been done. The budget was adopted tonight, the 20 days will run, we will get the money that we need for the streets that we're going to repair and we're responsible for. Hopefully, in the near future, the state of New Jersey's going to thaw on the freeze that the governor put in place, and we can complete all of the improvements that we said we were going to do, Miss Higgins. That's the truth. Now, you can accept it or you can not accept it, but that is the truth.
Thank you, that's the most I've heard you speak. Now, I'd like to bring up, so you were fully cognizant when these signs were up and made, that the money wasn't there?
No, I was not fully cognizant, all right, because it was only a month or so ago that the governor put the freeze into effect.
No, you prepared the budget.
Vinnie, Vinnie, Vinnie.
You're supposed to be prepared, don't worry.
He did blow, he did blow.
So Mr. Burke, we'll put all the, we'll put all the signs.
I do not go through the state, but you're going to white house. Listen, Ben, I'm telling you, stop the town.
You told Diane over here, that you checked your notes, and you, you know, you follow up the next day, and so wait, that sign is right across the sidewalk, and I want to know where else in Silver Lake and Soho were those signs placed, except right around my house, and you know where I was running. You're all around my house.
I have no clue where you.
You don't have, you're the one that ordered them.
I ordered the signs, and I had the signs put up so people would know that improvements were coming.
All right, but I'm right around my house.
That was.
Miss Burke, where else were they, Silver Lake or Soho, the signs?
Okay, you want to finish up?
I draw around all the area, they're only around my house.
Miss, you want to finish up?
That's harassment.
Okay, you want to finish up?
Yes, thank you. All right, Mr. Tucci, can you look at having that sign removed tomorrow? Are you going to be too busy going to another convention in Philadelphia on town time? You're learning wine from Hillary.
Jared O'Gershaw, A-Team. I want to clear something off about this campaign sign bullshit, which is really what it is. Okay? A number of months ago, before the election, Marie Burke, in response to the lady over here on Columbus Avenue, gave me a pamphlet for the county to give to her, would you drop it off if it's raining and stuff, would you please drop it off? So I go to drop it off to her, and it was a pamphlet for the program that they have to do repairs to property if people can't afford it, and then they put a lien on the property. When I got there, I asked her, I said, where's this sidewalk you're talking about? She showed me. And it was the sidewalk that goes over the apron. That was the part that was most damaged. And I noticed, and I called Marie from the car, I said, Marie, I said, you know, there's a way around this. And she says, what? I says, this street still hasn't gotten the Belgium blocks or been done. So all it has to do is be put on the list, and if you can get it on the list, it'll get done that way, or she'll have to go to the county. Lo and behold, way after the election, only about less than a month ago, I go to go up that street, and right on the corner is one of those signs, which was not there before the election.
Yes, it was.
No, it was not, because that street was not part of it. And I went down that street a lot because I had a relative at the end of the street. And that day, when I went to her house, I went there, and it was not there. So that sign was put up on Columbus and Belleville Avenue after apparently it got approved for this work. Now, the only thing I'm worried about is I believe the governor is trying to, I would use the word bribe towns, based upon the paper, that he'll release funds to certain towns if they get concessions, I believe, from their unions on healthcare. So hopefully, that doesn't cause a problem with our employees. But that's all, all right, I'm way off. Well, I'm, I'm right on that corner. That sign was put afterwards.
And all of them were.
Well, that's the other part, I'm talking about that sign.
I can't see you hiding that, like, what are you hiding from?
I'm a blocker.
All five components? Sure, you guys think 3.2 or something, sorry, well? The tax, the tax rate?
Total tax rate is 3.834.
All four components?
All three. That's all four components. County is 0.544, the school is 1.440, the local is 1.815, and the library 0.0035. The total, 3.834.
Regime motion, public hearing?
Second.
Court call.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes.
Regime motion, move it.
Second.
Regime motion, move it.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. Resolution number two.
Second.
One, one.
One.
Kelly, I have two, you know, I just would like to.
Go ahead. For resolution number one.
Regime motion, move it.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. New business? Rule resolution number one.
Second.
Court call.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. Resolution number two. Let me turn that over.
No, just one.
Regime motion, number two.
Second.
That's just a roll call, she has to stay.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. Resolution 25. Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're paying for the ads like they're supposed to, for these car sales, the toll companies. So tomorrow, can you check that?
I will.
All right, because they're supposed to be paying for the advertisements in the news paper.
That's right.
I move it.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. 27. Regime motion, move it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mago.
Yes.
Natarie.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lumber.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. Resolution 29. More of it?
Second. I just wanted to, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, Vernon for his 100th birthday. He was born in 1916, which was the year my father was born as well, and God bless Vernon. Lives up on Paul's.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Roosevelt.
Yes.
Flumbergh.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
New business? New resolution number 1.
Second.
Quick one more.
Councilmember Cosarrelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No.
Longo.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Roosevelt.
Yes.
Flumbergh.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
New business? I just wanted to congratulate Nelson Beraros' grandeur. He did an excellent job at the 9/11 part with the National Anthem of God Bless America. And on September 24th at 11 o'clock on Washington Street or William Street, we're gonna be dedicating another street sign to Mr. Finn that was killed in action in World War I.[1756.72]